They call the meetings. Then. Hello. Good afternoon. Okay, over there rebel rousers. Edward. It's time. Why is it always you buddy? It's always you. Okay, we're gonna officially call today's meeting to order. I'm not sure. Are you guys just gonna write down who's here or do we need to call roll?
Yeah, you should officially call roll.
Okay, sorry, the city manager overruled you. I will call roll and you guys can annotate it. Council president. Counselor Hudson. Counselor Duggar.
Here.
Counselor Teeter.
Yeah.
Counselor Tibnon.
Here.
Counselor Kimmy is here. All right. All right, the floor is yours. There's other.
Okay, are we good?
I'm sorry, I just read the agenda. I want to thank everyone for joining us today. We're in a much bigger crowd than we were for our last two council retreats today, as we know is not the full kind of retreat that we did last year, but more an update on where we are, how we're working. We invited staff to join us at the table this year as our partnership to work together to get things accomplished is so important for how the city is operating under the city manager form of government. I think in the nine months since our last retreat has been reflecting a little bit coming into today. I feel hopeful. I think coming through a hard budget time was challenging, but we have a lot of good work ahead of us today, and I think we have the right people in the room at the right time to move Beaverton forward for the next year. So I'm operating in a space today of gratitude that we're all going to spend the next two days together. And I hope is on Monday, when we all go back to our jobs and our staff go back to implement our plans over the weekend, that we have a renewed partnership among staff and the council, because I think we need it. People need to know that government's working more so than ever. I do don't want to sugarcoat it that I do think it's going to be a hard year for us, both financially, both policy goals, getting things accomplished, making sure we move our goals forward. I look forward to a time of abundance, but I think this year it's going to be not about that. I think it's going to be about making hard decisions together to move the city forward. With that, I want to turn it over to my partner, the city manager.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. I think just really for the good of the order for folks is just to understand kind of what we hope to get out of today in terms of kind of deliverables and then just the overall energy. And I think first is really to have council affirm their priorities and really provide guidance that's going to help navigate the budget development process. That'll be help for myself and for the team that's around the table. The council has identified some key topical areas, so we're going to be discussing three today. And then I think more importantly is for you to have a really good solid grounding of the financial outlook. I know many of you understand our situation, but going forward, I want you to have a level of detail of assumptions of what's driving that situation so that we can talk about it with the community in a way that they can gain an understanding of how we want to move forward. And then finally, I hope my hope for this council and for the team is to come away with some team agreements and really setting a foundation of how we work with each other, how we work with staff, the community, media. I think that's so important and that you leave this retreat with a firm commitment to the way that we engage one another. Because this is a long road and I always tell staff this is a marathon, not a hundred yard dash, and that we need to kind of engage the situation as such. So with that, I thank you all for being here and I really appreciate the council, the mayor's leadership of allowing staff to be around the table. I'm looking forward to a good conversation.
All right, excellent. Well. Welcome, everybody. I'm Sarah Wilson. For those of you I've not had the opportunity to meet in person from the new staff members around the table. My team and I are so pleased to be here. So Ashley Sanoff is back there. And Sasha Cannell's over here and we're just delighted to be able to assist you again and helping you to do just this. I appreciate your time leading up to this workshop and getting to connect with you to hear about what your passions and desires outcomes are for this work. And so we've identified some goals here for the next two days. So you all want to achieve clear and realistic goals aligned with your financial and organizational capacity. A game plan that outlines the goals, the timelines, the reporting frequency and a communication plan so you can keep track of those goals over the next year. Also, a process that will support the council in maintaining their focus and commitment to the priorities. And really, that's not just the council, but also staff to keep that in front of in front of them and be able to communicate it to the organization. And then also to identify or refine indicators and clear outcomes at the policy level. So we've designed the agenda intentionally to help you achieve these things as well as have some discussion on the topics that you all identified were important to you. So this is the agenda that we've outlined. We're going to do a quick warm up. To help, you'll notice there's a 6:30 adjournment time here, which was originally seven. I understand you've all had a very long day. And there's a desire to to move things along this evening. So we're going to do a quick warm up instead of a longer warm up and have a quicker reflection period instead of a longer one to help and still give you all the content time that you need as well as a break in there to get some dinner. So we'll start with the warm up and and then setting some ground rules after that to get us get our process a good foundation set to be able to move ourselves forward. And then we'll get into council topic number one about boards and commissions. Give you a break to be able to get some dinner and sit down. We'll do a working dinner after you've had a chance to just refresh and get some food. We'll do our council topic number two, talking about governance and getting an update there and having some discussion. And then do part one of the budget and financial outlook. And then wrap it up, see if we need to make any adjustments to our agenda for day two and to get you out of here by 6:30. Is everybody game for that? Okay, excellent. Let's see, I'm also supposed to remind you before I forget to mute any devices at the table. So if you haven't had a chance to put those cell phones on, do not disturb. Do that now. So we can stay focused. All right, quick warm up for today. So we've been, we've had lots of focus groups all week long and have been testing different questions, and this one has proven to be pretty fun and giving people a chance to connect and get to know each other better. So you have two questions ahead of you. The first one is to share something that you are personally good at. So we don't want to hear about your PowerPoint or your Excel skills or I guess as elected officials, we don't want to hear about your ability to like network with the community. We want to hear about something that you're personally good at. Or advocating with the legislature, like none of that. So other things that you personally excel at. And then the second question, so we'll go around and do that. And then the second question, you all have post-its in front of you and any Adam Grant fans in the audience? He just released his new book called Hidden Potential. And so I'm, I'm just in the the first section of it, but it's so good. There's so many rich insights there. And one of them got me thinking that this would be a fun question. As you guys think about this phase of transition and change for your team, sometimes it can seem so daunting of trying to move the move the needle forward and move the team forward. But when we can think about that future orientation about what we have the potential to do, it can be really aspirational and motivational and can really help to give us the energy we need to keep the work going. So we have at your place a post-it that says, we have the potential to dot, 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 and you're going to finish the sentence. So and there's some markers around the table to help you fill that in. So you can reflect on that one for a moment, but let's start at something you are personally good at. And I'm going to steal Ashley's from earlier in the week, and I know Counselor Kimmy will appreciate this, but I'm good at karaoke and don't get the chance to do it enough, but it's super fun. I'm going to turn it over to you, Kim, if you don't mind. All right. Debbie. Okay. We had that earlier this week, too. See ya. Awesome. Freestyle needlepoint? Now you know who to connect with if you're trying to find some new hobbies. Okay, Lee. House painting? Exterior, interior, all of it? Okay. We had several people tell us that they are good ATMs for their children, so. Good at volleyball. All right. Golf? Okay, Jenny. Walls out of boxes, like cardboard boxes, like a good fort? UPS boxes. Okay. All right. At what was that? Obstacle course racing. All right. Cooking? Dinner, dessert, all of it? Some people are cooking, baking. Little both. Okay.
I am really good at packing the dishwasher and the most efficient plate possible.
All right, Patricia.
I'm good at dancing.
Dancing.
I'm good at soccer.
Soccer?
Yeah.
Dan?
I was gonna say annoying my kids, but I think that's already been taken. I will say maybe crosswords.
Crosswords, okay.
I'm good at making friends with dogs.
Travis.
I'm good at baking.
Baking, good.
I'm good at recording sound.
Recording sound.
I was gonna say singing, but I'm not really good at it, but I think I am.
All right.
I'm good at playing hockey.
All right. Okay, well, let's now, you guys can, we'll start in a different place, but share what you have, what this team has the potential to do. So write it down in your post-its. We'll collect them. And put them up on the board. If the markers, there should be some markers around the table. If you don't have, if you need one, let me know. They're all around. Okay.
And also, if you have the handheld mics, if you just press the power button, give it like a couple seconds to turn on and then you can speak into the mic and it'll pick it up.
Do great things centering community needs in collaboration with each other.
I'll do mine. Be intentionally focused, fiscally minded, and still get amazing work done.
Is that a realistic work plan for the year?
I am. We have the potential to capitalize on our differences.
We have the potential to support our talented staff.
We have the potential to do waste management sustainably. Hashtag cranny.
I'll go. We have the potential, like Dan said, to support staff through big transitions.
We have the potential to make impactful and smart decisions.
We have potential to operate this common form of government in an uncommon or unconventional way.
To move Beaverton forward.
Put this shit to balance the budget.
Balance the budget, yes.
To make hard decisions. Make groundbreaking decisions and breakthroughs that other cities can emulate.
Yes. All right.
Make a difference.
Change Beaverton for the better.
Accomplish wonderful things for our community, working together and making the best possible use of our resources.
One of the things I would really like is for the staff around the table to keep us grounded in what we can feasibly do or or not do.
I spent some time when I was flying back last night watching our last council retreat and some of our past meetings. I think we need to, once we get the majority of council voices, we need to move forward. I think we spend a lot of time when there's already a clear four vote count. And so what's a good way of surmising that? I think.
I, my one comment to that is sometimes we go around once and I know I hear things that I didn't hear if I went first. And so I like to be able to circle back in case I slip or change. So that's my only thought.
Or if there's no clear consensus, I think it's okay. Like, like I think to the mayor's point, if we get to four, like and we're, and no one else is changing their mind, it's okay, then we can move forward. Right?
I was gonna say like compromise to get to consensus. I think sometimes we like to dig our heels in, but I think that in order to make progress, we need to be willing to compromise to actually get to that consensus.
I think it's also really easy to kind of veer into the how. And that's something I repeatedly remind myself is that is where city staff come in, is to figure out how to to get things done. So if we find ourselves kind of drifting into that being kind of gently pulled back into the the middle lane where we're supposed to be. Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna add, just because you and I, I was thinking, I was just gonna put it as like a clear focus, clearly defined problems, right, that we're trying to solve and not jumping to solutions, because I think it's so easy to just want a policy on a solution or something. And I think we skip that step very often on clearly defining what we're, what we're trying to solve. Because that kind of sets up solutioning, that sets up success, that sets up everything else. So kind of focusing on the why. To your point, Counselor Tibnon.
Just honesty around, maybe it's kind of back to staff, keep us grounded, but honesty on like what we can and can't get done.
I don't know if it's like truly up there, but what what I often struggle with, and this is more for staff than us, is that we need, we need you honest, it might not be the word I would use. I might use direct, or I think they're kind of similar to each other, but I think what I hear from staff when they're frustrated and and watching some of the past meetings and last year as well, is I heard a line of like, well, if that's what council wants, like, I think we are well aware that we are the decision makers and we don't know what we're always saying yes to. So I want you to feel empowered over the next two days. Like, I don't want the the company line of like, if that's what council wants, you're the decision makers. Like, we internalize that, we get that. But when we ask for something and and the response is, if that's what council wants, I don't know what the flip is that council's saying, yes, what are we not getting? And so how do we? This is, I don't know how to make this a more concise way, but like, we need that information to make decisions. We know we're the decision makers. So I'm just looking at you guys. We need that.
I would just add, like, bringing us along, like, I think different folks are in different places. So even like making sure that we do understand what is and what isn't feasible. So just being able to say like, here's why, because sometimes it's like, no, and it's like, just help me understand why so that we have more of an understanding. But like, we can take the no, just clarity. I don't know if that's a thing to put, but just adding on to that.
I just add from a staff perspective, just what I'm hearing. Ask questions if you're not sure, right? You know, I think that needs to be, we need to have space for that, for making sure that, you know, if you're not ready to make a decision, or if you're not getting the information that you need or feel like you need, just ask. But want to make sure that that's part of this exercise.
So on the flip to staff saying, if that's what staff wants, council has to quit saying, I need more information to make decisions, because I think you're going to let us off the hook. We will never make a decision. There will always be more information. So when we need to make decisions is really important. So council has to internalize that we are the decision makers. And sometimes we have to make decisions about what's in front of us. So I think our our challenge from the council is to move through our questions to get to decision making, and your job is not to let us off the hook.
Agreed. Yeah, I was looking at clarity when I was thinking, ask questions.
Last one. Have council take ownership in the decision that they make, assuming that once you get the kind of all the information, right, eyes wide open, you have all collectively agreed to that decision, whether it's four or seven, and that we all move forward. Because that's the one area that really kind of hangs us up is when I feel like folks are still spinning in different directions, but you all gave us direction from that dais. So that would be really helpful is that we're all going to make a commitment to, you know, we all said we're going left, so we're going left, right? And we'll own it if we've, we missed, we missed a beat or something and go back and correct that. But assuming that we've got all our ducks in a row, that that would be really helpful, I think, for staff.
Just an add-on to that, I hear that, and asking staff to recap back what they heard, because I think sometimes we think we gave direction and what we heard and what you heard is different. So just making sure we close that loop.
Yeah, we'll get to that through the governance piece, because I think your your chair is going to also take some accountability on on kind of bringing folks together, too.
I think, you know, just looking at the list, I just want to say, assume positive intent, right? You know, at some level, like, we're talking about a lot of questions, a lot of process, a lot of, you know, steps, but I think just we're all doing this because we care about the community and we care about staff and we care about positive outcome for all of this. And so just, I think, you know, hopefully everyone hears that and and the discussion as we go forward.
Any questions?
All right. So official, this doesn't sound like it's on. Can you hear me? Okay, great. All right. Well, hello. I'm Lani Parr with the Neighborhood and Public Involvement Program and here with C.C. Ritter, Public Engagement Division Manager here in the City Manager's Office. And we're happy to be here this afternoon to talk about one of our most favorite topics, boards and commissions. We have about an hour today to give a preview into some of the work that will be occurring over the next year about boards and commissions. And some of this work might include some work sessions or deeper analysis. And today, we really just wanted to begin with the process. And today, we really just wanted to begin with the process of giving you an opportunity to express any questions that you might have about some of the topics that we're going to go over. And also, if you wanted to provide further direction to the city manager or provide feedback on the items that we're going to be discussing before we bring on the new slate of board and commission leaders that will be being appointed and taking their new role in January. So with that, next slide, please. We'll get started and give a quick overview about our 15 boards and commissions. That also includes the Climate Action Task Force and which also functions as a limited duration board. Since you do appoint the board members, that's what triggers that. And we have 180 dedicated board members that serve on these boards. And the average length of term is three years for for a regular board position. And then if you're an alternate, it's a one-year length of term. We've also provided you a matrix that gives you a detailed description about each of the boards and commissions. And it provides, it notes if there is a legal or code requirement to have that board, because I know that question has come up in the past. There are nine boards that have these requirements. It's green and yes, thank you. Thank you, yeah. Thank you so much. The the boards, they range in size from seven board members to 19 board members, plus alternates with the average of being 11 board members. Most of these boards meet monthly, with the exception of a handful of them, the Social Service Funding Committee, the the Budget Planning Commission, and Bureau of Budget. One thing to note, though, is that many of the advisory boards have subcommittees. And those subcommittees, there's like, with many of the advisory boards, they they have two or three subcommittees. And those are also meeting each month as well, in addition to their their board meeting. And some examples of that would be like grant, application, approval, subcommittees, or event planning, such as the DAB Night Market Subcommittee. And then there's our team that provides board member orientation with the City Attorney's Office in January. We we do that each year to kick off and help ensure that each of the board members really know what is expected and that there's no surprises. We also provide a board and commission manual that's updated annually with the do's and don'ts, and is just a good resource all around. And we also provide several trainings throughout the year to help the board members be equipped in their board member role. And those trainings will vary based on the feedback we're receiving from from either board members and staff, or just also where we're headed as an organization. So we're flexible with what those trainings look like in a given year. We we do do our annual recruitment in the fall. And right now, we're currently in the interview process stage. And you'll be voting on the board appointments December 12th at your council meeting. And the other detail that is that you wouldn't be aware of is that each staff, each board has a staff liaison assigned, but some boards actually have additional staff beyond the staff liaison. So just depending how much work is needed to help support that board in their work dictates how much staff support is received for for that board. And I would say overall, the one thing that we we've heard over and over, staff capacity from staff liaisons, and even more so in recent years. And one thing that really contributed to that in the last couple of years in particular was the legislature's recent public meeting law changes that added quite a bit of administrative workload. And it was constantly changing. And so we had to keep pivoting and adding new processes. And so that did fall squarely on city staff to equip the boards and make sure that they were keeping the boards in compliance with the state law. And I would also say that the other thing that we do to help make it a meaningful experience for our board members is with the staff liaisons, we meet quarterly, we go over best practices, we have legal updates, we standardize processes wherever possible. And that not only helps streamline staff's time, but it's also helping ensure that the the process is easier for the volunteers to understand what's expected of them. So with that, we'll go to the next slide, please. So here are the four areas that we were hoping that we'd like to cover today. First, we'd like to give an entire overview, and then at the end, we're going to pose some specific questions. So we're going to talk about standardizing the role of the council liaison, the size of boards, frequency of board meetings, and board work plans. Next slide. The role of council liaisons, this is our current practice for council liaisons, and we have eight boards that have those. They, all of you attend those board meetings regularly, and you give council updates, you're formally on the agenda. And that's that's how we've been doing the city business. But we haven't really had the the role standardized or the function defined, which is really causing a lack of consistency across the boards, especially since council liaisons rotate every two years. And since you all operate differently, this can be confusing to our volunteers as they try to understand what your role is and what your, with their boards work and how you interface together. So next slide, please. So through our research with other cities, we're suggesting the following framework for the right sizing of Beaverton. It's a little hard to see on that blue. So I'll I'll just go through some of the main, through the 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 main bullets. That your role not reflect the majority position held by the council on matters referred to the advisory body, and not initiate, propose, or advocate for their personal policy position on a matter before the advisory board or attempt to direct debate, lobby, or otherwise influence the direction or decision-making process of the advisory body. Represent the city positively and promote constructive relationships with community volunteers and city partners. Not vote at the advisory board's meeting on any item. Periodically report to the entire council on significant and important activities related to the council's goals and priorities. And a council member who is not appointed to the liaison of the advisory body should refrain from attending to the the board meetings due to the appearance of influence and a potential for public meeting law violation. Next slide, please. And some other notable best practices from our other jurisdictions. When we, when we reached out to our network, they shared that attendance at board meetings varied for their council liaisons. It would be as much as from an annual visit to a quarterly visit. So quite a bit in between. The council liaisons were informed of the board work, especially if they were going very infrequently through the board's agendas, minutes, work plans, and annual reports. And if the, and if the council liaison did attend the meeting, they were not on the agenda. And as one city representative said, that their main goal was to be there to listen. So they didn't have a formal role in the board meeting. And then it was also noted that many cities actually didn't even have council liaisons. Or or maybe they would only have one or two, and they would hand select those boards. That really would greatly benefit from having that relationship. Next slide, please. And so for the next topic, size of boards. So our code does allow city boards to have up to three alternate board positions. But most of our boards only utilize up to two alternate positions. And so one of the things we wanted to mention is that staff are, as they're looking to maximize their capacity in serving these boards. One of the, we definitely had several boards, staff liaisons, make the recommendations that they did not want alternates this next year. And so you're going to see that in the 2024 board appointments. This is going to save some staff time. It's going to help, you know, not only just with onboarding, but just that that support role. And so yeah, and it's it's that it's a may that they may have alternates, not a requirement. So that is a change in a desire as we have limited resources. And and staff, as they're feeling that they're looking at, where can they save some some capacity? Next, next slide, please. In the, in the same vein of helping staff build more capacity and doing more with less with our current budget picture, having the flexibility to reduce the number of board meetings, if that works for the board, is really seen as a viable option to to the staff. Especially those boards that have many subcommittees, because, you know, it's not unusual for a staff liaison to be supporting four board meetings in a given month. And that's, that's an incredible workload on top of their their regular workload. And so just having that flexibility, this is one area that there's a desire, like, could we do things differently? Could we go to every other month? That's what some of the Neighborhood Association committees and the NACS, those boards have been looking at meeting every other month, if that worked for them, and that's been working very well. And so so this is in the same same vein, this is what the the staff liaisons would like to to see happen, if that makes sense for the board's work and and timeline. Next slide. And the the last topic, the board work plans. Currently, the way at our current practice here, annual reports are presented to council detailing the work of the board. And we don't have a formal standardized process for annual work plans. And and so we see efforts to help board members better understand what their role is, how their work is contributing to the city's vision and council priorities. We realize it's going to help the volunteers' experience and also mitigate the frustration of our volunteers if they have a better understanding of what their, what their role is and what it isn't. And we also know that staff liaisons, in some instances, have, they're looking for more tools to be able to help redirect the passionate ideas that come forward throughout the year. Even though they say, here are the things that our board is working on, there's you've got just these these community board members that are really excited. And they'll hear your council meeting, things discussed, and all of a sudden, at their next board meeting, they're like, could we, could we touch that? And so this is one area that we're identifying as a potential to help capacity and also adding a more meaningful experience for volunteers. Also, when we reached out to other cities about how are, how are they doing things in this area? Some of the best practices that we we learned about was that some do create annual work plans, and they do detail the major projects that the board is going to tackle, and they do that in advance of the year. And then that is given to the council in advance. Some other, majority of other cities, they all, they tend to all give annual council reports, like what we do. And then one city recently last year had hosted a boards and commissions workshop to better understand the council's vision and goals, and then to discuss the role of the boards and commissions in supporting that vision. And so that was, that was a cool idea that we learned about. Next slide. So this, this next slide just captures what the next few months may look like. I won't read the timeline. And then going on to the next slide, I'm going to just capture those four points again. And then some of the questions that we wanted to, this is the fun part of just really hearing your questions and feedback from you. So on the first, the first item, the standardization of the role of council liaison. Do you have feedback on the frequency of council liaison attendance at meetings? And do you feedback on the role of the council liaison? Open it up.
Anything else, just indicating that I'm I'm ready to talk. So you only want me to talk about the first one? I think like my comments are kind of encompassing. It's like, this is one I think I've thought the most about, considering where this is where council has spent a lot of our energy, and it seems like a lot of our time from the dais is talking about boards and commissions. I'll be honest, it's the one that I I have been holding my death grip on from the last form of government. And so I had to really spend some time with myself to think about what could help us actually move forward. And I put a lot of thought into who do we hold accountable for our goals? And that is the city manager. And I think some of these questions are all tied to that, how frequently they meet, the size of the board, staffing. And so I want us to think about a consideration around letting the city manager assign the boards and commissions a work plan for the year as she assigns the work plan coming out of our weekend. Because right now, it feels like the board and commission are the councils, and it is a new, like, a nuisance to some of the staff, because it feels like maybe they're operating in a different silo than the rest of us, having come up from boards and commission, having come up on a board and commission that created its own work plan. I see both sides of it. I see the the greatness of the community deciding some things. But as we shifted to the city manager form of government, the seven of us have to set the policy goal for the city, and we're holding the city manager accountable. So how are we honestly holding her accountable, having boards and commission create their own work plan? So I think in the vein of leaning in and giving our city manager a little bit more, when she comes out of the council retreat and she presents the council with the work plan, I think it needs to have the board and commission work plan in it. I think the check and balance where the council gets to say is like, we approve the city manager's work plan. So we don't like what the boards are working on, that's where we can change it. I just don't see a path where the seven of us sit in a room and decide what boards are going to work on. I mean, we have a hard time getting our regular work done, let alone that. And so I think the size of the board, you know, some of that's been my own inability to say no when I'm interviewing people, and they're really awesome. I'll tell you, it's really hard when you're interviewing 25 people for three slots to tell people no. So so I'm going to own that the board swelled under my mayorship, that wasn't really that way before. So I hear staff, they, and I will tell you, they vitimately push back every year when I say, well, why can't we have three alternates? So I understand, I'm willing to to sacrifice that. I think some of the ways that we're we're creating opportunity is that I'm not appointing people to multiple boards. I'm not appointing people to multiple terms unless it's a really good reason. So staff right now have to justify if they're appointing someone to a second, third, or fourth term. And so I think we're going to create more opportunity, and we won't have that same pressure to have so many alternates in there. And the frequency of the board meeting, I think, will go along with the, my hope would be the city manager's plan. If that board needs to meet 12 times to accomplish it, then the board needs to meet 12 times. If the board needs to meet six times, I think it's going to be directive on the work. I think I feel mildly uncomfortable saying every board needs to meet every other month. I think it's going to depend on the workload. And so that's kind of all of it, throwing it out there.
This is something I learned, I don't know if you know this, but you go like this to put your, I don't know, I learned that like two weeks ago. I have a question, and then I can make my comments. With something like the library advisory board, because it's like an external, like, is there a mechanism to say the library can have their own advisory board that's not a public? Does that make sense, like advises from like, like the Transportation Advisory Committee? That's an internal city staff identifying people in the community. Does that make sense?
You might want to say more.
Okay, so like
City Commissions.
Yeah, so I realize we're talking about city commissions, but like, for example, we have a Transportation Advisory Committee that's being led by staff. And that is something that is being done by staff and led by staff. Is that something that's on the table for something like a library? Is that something that's on the table for something like a library advisory board or not necessarily? Or Bill, or CF, or Kim?
Well, I think what you're describing is more staff driven because it's project driven. Transportation system plan update will have a technical advisory committee, community committee, you know, all those kinds of extra committees that are driven by staff for that work purpose. And it's pretty finite and specific. I, I'm assuming what we're talking about is more broadly, like the council point.
Yeah, I, I only ask, I've been sitting on library advisory board. It's amazing. I just wonder, is there a mechanism where the, that is something that staff owns versus an external board or commission?
And I would add that there's actually a state law requirement that we have a library board with ORS 357.
Okay. Maybe that's the answer. Okay. I'll just share my kind of initial thoughts. I'm super open. The first question is around standardizing the role of council liaison. I've gone back and forth a lot about this. I love being a council liaison, but I do think that that is like a former form of government. So I just wonder, is there a way for staff to, to keep the, the board or commission in the loop without that council liaison? I think we should all be able to participate in these boards and commissions, but I don't know that a liaison is like super required. I'm not like dead set for or against it, but it's something that I want you all to think about. I think that we should all be able to participate and not necessarily just designate. In response to some of the mayor's comments, I think I can support most of that. My concern is if there are people on boards and commissions who have, they're probably joining for some reason too. So how are we balancing what they want to do as community members and making sure that it aligns with the staff plan? So just making sure that there's some like, there will be friction, but just like that there's some understanding, like this is what this board or commission is looking to do. I think alternates, I'm pretty open to that and the frequency of board meetings, like I support the work plan work. The one thing that gave me a little bit of pause in this presentation, well, I was, I liked the BNC workshop. I think that's really fabulous. The one thing that gave me pause was council members who are not appointed shouldn't attend. That gives me a little bit of just nerves, like I'd like to be able to attend a board meeting for which I am not a commissioner on, not to do anything but to learn from that community. So I just want to be thoughtful of like what that means for us.
And I'll weigh in on that. I would, based on my experience, it's actually really not a good practice. Sometimes counselors forget the moment they step into a room, there's influence and people sit up a little bit higher. They mind what they say. And so it's important that sometimes there may be an appropriateness for, for a counselor to be there. I think council needs to be intentional. If you're going to start coming to these meetings, you have an advisory body that's there for a purpose. But your level of influence entering into a room, you need to take in consideration. That's why I would not encourage that. And then if council wants to be continuing in that role of having a, having a formal liaison role, they certainly can do that. It's in, it's in multiple forms of government. And so it really is the purview of the council bandwidth where you'd like to spend your time. But I think for staff, we really need to understand when you're in that room, why you're in that room, what, what value you want to bring to that conversation. And knowing that, you know, you're not there to influence, but to, like you said, to inform if it's appropriate on if a council takes action for something that's applicable to that particular board.
And I hear you. And I think participating in a way where we're not speaking or influ, like that would be my only, right? Like, like I would like to be able to attend a board or commission meeting of which I'm not a liaison of, not to speak, but to simply listen. That's just kind of what sits in my head. If something was happening in some place and we wanted to be better informed, what are the ways for us to do that?
I'll, I'll just add a comment to this. When, when Jenny and I first met, when we hired her, one of the things she asked me not to do was to go into boarding commissions, which was really hard for me because I'm like you, I'm like, I want to learn, I want to do things. But she specifically asked me because it was confusing to staff and it would overshadow your guys' work as the council and the board. If my opinion and presence was there, which is why I haven't, and since Jenny's been hired, attended any of those. I'm not saying that's the way that council needs to perform, but this is what the city manager asked of me in our first initial meeting. It's hard for me to recognize that my presence alters conversations. And so I'm not special as the, you guys have that same influence and power. And so just consider that. And, and if we're going to go that direction, which again, like I'm not going, so this conversation doesn't include me right now. But thinking about if we go that way, what boundaries can we put around it? Because you're not just a regular person there to learn, like you have immense influence and power. And so I think we forget, we turn, we forget that, like.
Okay, so let's just keep going around and we'll hear from all the counselors and make sure everybody gets a chance to weigh in once. So I saw councillor Duggar and then councillor Hartmire Prigg and then councillor Kimmy. And we'll see who else wants to weigh in. Councillor Duggar?
Thanks for that. This is one that, I mean, you all know, this is, I think I'm obsessed with this. This has been one of the reasons why I ran for office, because I've been on these boards, many, many of them. Got my start at the neighborhood level doing this. I kind of want us to, the direction I agree with the mayor, but I kind of want us to up level this a little bit. Why do we have boards and commissions? Like what problem are we trying to solve? Not the legal one, not the requirements. I'm specifically asking you because when I look at these questions, I don't know that I can answer that because of this setup. From 1980 or whenever the first boards and commissions came, we're just tweaking it, tweaking it. And I don't know if we don't have those central questions of why we're doing this, why a board and commission exist, what problem we're trying to solve with it. I don't know that tweaking around the edges and, and just manipulating a strategy from 1980 is the most appropriate way. In my mind, a board and commission is there to, obviously to, the, the easy one is to advise the council, right? To engage the community, to get people to own their government, right? Let's just take those three. And I bet each of the counselors here and probably a lot of staff could give me a dozen more, right? Is a board or commission the best way to actually get those three things that I just told you? I don't think so. I'm not sure, but I'm not an expert, but I, but I want to start with the problem. It was what we aligned in that, that, the, the kind of system rules. Start with the problem, not the solution. Directionally, I think I'm aligned with the mayor. I think it makes a lot of sense, what she said. But I also, like, if we just make these changes, staff time goes down a little bit, but we're not really solving anything. And, and in my mind, there's a lot of work that happens at a board and commission. People spend, we, we're asking a lot of our community members, spend time away from your family doing this. A lot of work happens, but not a lot gets done. And that's a phrase I've learned because that's where the frustration is coming from, right? And, and I don't know that these things will solve that. I think they're good first steps, but I think until we get that fundamental question answered, is this the best way to, to do what we're trying to do, right? Is the model from 1975 or 1980 what we should be using in 2023, right? Is it, is it matching our goals on diversity, equity? Are we, are we building things systemically that, that answer those questions? I don't know. Like, I, I can give you my opinion. Sure, size of boards, I don't really care. Like that's whatever you guys think, frequency, whatever works, I don't really care. I think the work plans are great, sure. It's not going to affect my life drastically. My frustration comes from Bull John being on these boards. I don't know that this is going to affect their life that much. I feel like we're, we're tweaking around the edge without answering the fundamental questions. Is, are the, the boards and commissions set up in the right way to capture what we actually want to get accomplished? I don't think so. And I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but I just, I'm putting that out in the ether because I think we have a lot more work here to do over the next year and a half. And I hope that this, I'm okay with starting here. Don't get me wrong. I think this is really good work to start with. But this cannot be the ending. This has to just be the beginning of a conversation, a strategic conversation on what we're trying to accomplish. I'm going to shut up and give space to other people now.
Just a point of clarification. So you have a matrix in front of you that shows you the number of boards. As Lanny said, we have 15. Between six or seven of those, we, we need to have by state, couple of them. And Bill, correct me if I'm wrong, I think we're established that we're meeting by ordinance. And then that gives you kind of the delta is the ones where, to your point, do we need to have these and what purpose? So some of them, we do, about half of them, we do need to have. And others are ordinance driven and then others are by design.
Yes, and like if it's our rule, as long as we're accomplishing what the state statute says, I'm saying that we can change it and, and do a different format. It's the only thing I would append to that because I think there, we have to consider obviously our legal requirements. But, but is, is the actual legal requirement to do this function or to have the board? My guess is it's probably to do that function, right? And that's where I want us to think creatively around engaging the public, establishing all those things that I talked about. So that, that would be my only, thank you.
Councillor Hartmire Prigg?
Thank you. I think the purpose question is a really good one. I really like the idea though of having it built into city manager's work plan because it will give clear direction to the boards and commissions. And I think that could be a really interesting experiment and pilot for us to try. And since the, I understood the presentation correctly, that wouldn't start until the, the next year of boards and commissions, right? It's kind of status quo for a year. Okay, I think that would give us more time to also kind of assess and really think critically about this, but then to kind of pilot. How does it fit under the work plan and does that work? Because I think, you know, the, the boards and commissions are to advise council. And so I think from that regard, I totally hear what you're saying, councillor Hassan, but I think we either keep them or we don't, right? You know, like, so I think a council liaison is required because their goal is to advise us. I think that we don't necessarily have to be at every single meeting. And I think that giving the, each board and commission the opportunity to set their own cadence and what's an appropriate amount of meetings for the work plan, maybe that they received is a really nice balance and should cut down on workload. I guess we would probably need to say a maximum amount of meetings so it doesn't increase staff workload. Because I know some of the ones I've served on would love to meet even more because they don't want to set subcommittees, right? So they would like to just get it all done together. So I think the one thing I had kind of a question on is where in the suggested framework, it says the council liaison should periodically report to the entire council on significant and important activities. I would think that's something we might need to define a little further for us because that could be every month after you've been, and that could be never, right? And so I think that would be something where that's a space that I particularly feel is ambiguous. And I never know when to come back to council and tell you what the conversation was or like, am I to come advocate or things like that? So that one's still one that I really need guidance on what we should be doing in that space.
Okay, councillor Kimmy?
Thank you. I mostly agree with mayor's thoughts on the boards and commissions. I was part of the board for a long time and I went through, I think, three or four different counselors. Some of them were there just saying hi and some of them there couldn't wait to leave early. So, and I didn't see as a board member, see the necessity of having a council liaison at every board meeting. And I personally don't think the council liaison is needed for boards and commissions because we have a staff who's conducting the meeting. And if it's going to be directed by the city manager, they'll be doing specific tasks and specific work. So then we just have to ask the city manager what's going on if you're interested. And anything further, we can ask the staff liaison to report to us either one-on-one or personally. So if you're going to be deciding policies in higher level, I don't think we should be engaging in everyday details of the work. So if I had a choice, I would not have a council liaison. But if you personally want to go and listen into or, or, or talk to the staff, totally okay. But I don't think it's necessary, number one, and especially council manager directed work that they're, they will, they will be doing. So it's, it's going to be on the council, city manager's job to monitor. And also we, we kind of have to expire the task forces, I think. They have done a specific work, so they should be expired and then come back when we, we ask them to do maybe update a specific task. And, and those should be clearly laid out, I think, from the very beginning that you're asked to do certain work. And when it's done, then you'll be disbanded and then maybe called back later on for updates. And some of the boards, yes, I know it's required, so keep those, but some of, some other boards are good to have as advisory board. But I, I would love to have an idea where we review every few years or so and either update or revise or, or, you know, have different board or expire the board. So, because some of the boards are meeting, that's great, but are they necessary? Probably not. So I like to have an option to review every few years. So that's my take on it.
Okay, we haven't heard yet from councillor Teeter, councillor Tivnan, councillor Teeter?
Yeah, unless councillor Tivnan, do you want to go first? Okay. Yeah, I've got several thoughts here. First, a question for Lanny. The housing technical advisory group, are they active or is that more administrative so they're not technically a board or commission?
That's an ad hoc committee.
Okay. Is that, like, is that group time limited or is it just ongoing?
I don't know if there's a time limit on it.
Okay.
I can get back to you on that.
Okay. No, I'm just asking because as we're talking about what it would look like to have boards run more administratively, if that's an example of how that happens. Okay, okay, thanks.
That's an example of one that we brought in with our recruitment. So we still recruit for that with our boards and commissions. And it's kind of actually what we had recommended for the climate action task force to be run similarly like that.
Okay, okay, thanks. I've got one other question, but then other, oh yeah, so one of the things I think would help make, help me make a decision as we keep going forward with this sort of conversation. So there's a lot of good information in this matrix. I would also love to see how much staff time might be aligned with each board or commission, just so we know how much of workload we're saving for each potential change. But then some, some of my comments here, I think there are two phases of this work and for me, in my mind. I think this, this conversation here is some of the near-term incremental changes we can make. I do agree with councillor Duggar. I think there's a second phase that looks at it more as a full system that would take more time to go through some of those changes. As we, as we talk with, talk through some of this some more, I would love to make sure we're, we're engaging our boards and commission members throughout this process to get their thoughts. I know I've gotten that feedback from some of my, the board members on, that I'm liaison for. Just make, want to make sure that we're not making decisions without them, but including them in this process too. I, I think I would, I think I would support having them be more administrative and aligned with the city manager's work plans. I, I like, I like how that was, was sounding. And I was taking a lot of notes, so I'm flipping back and forth really quick. Oh man. One second. I would also support some consolidation between different boards or commissions, depending on the work plan, depending on the needs. If we need to set up an occasional task force for a specific project that, or, or priority that council's got, I would support that. I'm thinking of if there's a big transportation project, like we got the citizen advisory committee for the Milliken Way project or transportation advisory committee for the transportation system planning. Like if there's something time limited, wherever it's a very clear work plan, I think that, that can be effective if it supports city manager's work planning. But I like these changes. I'm not attached to the council liaison role as much. I really enjoy it. If it is something that helps the, the board or commissions be more effective without me there, I'm willing to take that step back. And I'm also in support of smaller boards or changed, changed, changed board meeting schedules. But that all depends on the work plan and the role that they're actually needing to fill. And as far as NACS are concerned, if they are wanting to change their meeting schedules, that could provide some more flex time for those people to get together and do meetups like the Central Beaverton Neighborhood Association Committee, they've been doing some meetups just more informally. But I, I like these first steps.
Councillor Tivnan?
Okay, thank you. So I started on a commission, that's, that was my first engagement with the city of Beaverton, was on the arts commission. And it was actually from receiving a postcard as I was unpacking boxes as we moved back into the city and was literally thinking to myself, how can I get involved out here? And this thing just magically appeared in front of me. And so I. And um, so I I a- and I served on the Arts Commission at a time when the Arts Commission had a whole lot of responsibility and stuff to work on. So um, I I was very lucky in that way, that it felt like there was stuff you could wrap your arms around at every single meeting, and it felt very fruitful and worthwhile. Um, and it's the Arts Commission, so it's all about creativity and bringing people together and um, enjoy. And so I I derived a lot of pleasure out of that. I had had a couple of different council liaisons when I was on it. One um viewed the role one way and one viewed the role another way. One was pretty passive and sat there was very quiet and gave a very, very brief overview of what had happened at a past council meeting. Um, the other one was extremely excited to be in the room, to the point that they kept having to back away so that they didn't interject into our conversations. Um, and loved to get the council update on what was happening on the dais and decisions that were being made to the point that the commissioner would say, okay, we need to move on. Um. It wasn't there. It was not the mayor. Um, but I I have to say I appreciated having the councillors there because um, on two levels, one, it it created such a sense of legitimacy to be seen by our our governors of the city um, to to bear witness to what we were working on. Um, but I don't think I they needed to be there every single time. And and now on the flip side of it, having served in this role and having had the opportunity to um, be a part of several different uh, boards and commissions so far. Um, it's it's quite a lot. And to to go to that meeting and sit through it when you have a lot of other meetings as a councillor and then to not have a whole lot to do in that meeting, um, except except listen and absorb. To me, here's the rub is I am fine with the frequency being that the liaison goes every time. Because I take copious notes, public, public law here. If anyone ever wanted to look at this, they could read every note I'd ever taken in a meeting. But I don't have anyone to give that information to. So this, the part that seems very um nebulous to me at this point is the true role of the council liaison as it relates to transmitting the information back to the council. And if there's a mechanism for us to do that, I think that that makes it more worthwhile for the councillor to play more um, frequent role and absorb that information to transmit it back. If because that's broken right now, there's there, there's no pathway to get that information back. So if we don't see a feasible way of creating that pathway back because it's a lot to to try and establish time in our already busy meetings to set aside time for every single councillor to weigh in on every single board and commission. I don't know what that looks like, then then I can see it being more of a let's cut out the the frequency of it being every single meeting and more like quarterly where we can go in and we can be on. I I think being on the agenda is fine and saying, okay, councillor, we're gonna take fifteen, twenty, thirty minutes, whatever it is of tonight's meeting to hear from you and ask you questions and tell you things. And I I think that 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 would be something that I know from the the boards and commissions I've served on. They probably really welcome that opportunity to do that. Um, so as far as standardizing the role of the council liaison, I'd say the only way that we can get to this this place of frequency is to understand if there is going to be a standardized way of transmitting the information back to the to the whole council in a way that is helpful to the council and our decision-making. Then I would say every every meeting I I could commit to that, otherwise quarterly makes sense. Um, and then as far as the alternates go to shift into that, I never quite understood the the point of it, other than, oh, well, if someone drops off, we need someone else so that we can meet coram. But I never saw, in my experience, saw a council in danger of that happening. And I also always felt kind of sorry for the alternate. They go to every single meeting and they can't really weigh in in a really fundamentally important way. It just um, always kind of seemed like a little bit of a ripoff for that individual. Um, and I also kind of think to Kimmy's point, councillor Kimmy, about um, assessing the viability of the councils over time is if they lose coram, I think it means there's in there's a wanting interest maybe. And if we're not getting as many people interested in serving on a particular board or commission, maybe that is saying something about that particular thing. It could also be our ability to engage and get the word out. Um, but I'm fine with us uh, moving away from appointing alternates. The frequency of the board meetings, I I I do, I just fielded some input from someone who's who is serving as a chair on one of our boards and commissions. They would like to not be the chair anymore. Uh, they've done it for a long time. They are extremely devoted to their board. And uh, there's no one else stepping up and into that role and they haven't identified someone who can take it on. And they think that part of it is because a lot of people just show up to the meetings and they sit there and they just listen and they weigh in on some stuff maybe, and then they leave. And so if to the mayor's point and and to this idea of having their work plans tied really closely to the overall work plan of the city, having something for them to focus on like this this monthly meeting, this meeting is going to be all about advisory. This meeting is all about assigning responsibilities or whatever the thing might be so that people actually have a call to action for why they're in the room. I think is really important for us to get to that. And I and if it is purely, well, this border commission truly is just advisory, I don't think that has to be an every month thing. But if they are doing something, if they're if they're researching things, if they're awarding grants, if they're setting up events, um, if if they're participating in something that is time sensitive, that the city needs volunteer help with, then monthly probably makes more sense. Um, and then the last thing I'll say about the work plans is that 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 and the feedback loop for council seems has always seemed like a disconnect to me, that they don't, they're untethered from the work that we're doing today and tomorrow. What are, what is the vision for for next year? And this, I'll just toss this out there because I've I've gone back and forth on this a lot of. I have felt um, like, are the are the boards and commissions there to support the work of the council? Or are they there to keep us in check? And I've heard different varying opinions on this, and I've sat with this for quite a long time. And my personal opinion is that they are there to support the council. Keeping keeping the city in check is a vital, wonderful thing and a very necessary thing. But I I don't think that this is the room or the avenue for that. This is to help us. This is to get people engaged, just like that day when I thought, how can I get involved with my city? And that thing came in the mail, and there's got to be a lot of trust mixed in with that, that your your uh, councillors are doing things in the interest of the city that you want to support and you want to be a part of helping. And so you have to embrace the work plan is just as much as each of the councillors does and the city staff do. Um, and I had one other thought, and that was on um, multiple councillors attending. And I I had that happen one time and it now that I I take it for granted, I've been in this role for three years now. I still feel like me, I don't feel intimidating. But I I I have to remind myself that there's there's something else following me into the room. And I have to ask myself why I want to be in there. And um, if we are going to have feedback loops, that I think would remove that potentially the um, I need to be in here to bear witness to what's going on in here and hear this conversation firsthand. Um, which I think is, I think that's what you were saying. If we were able to share with each other what's happening in those rooms. Um, but I but I regardless of how that works out, I do think that there is something to to what um, the city manager has been saying, and I I am in support of that, that we just we limit the the council interactions with the boards and commissions to something that is serving a a purpose of information sharing back and forth in a very clear delineated way, especially for the city staff for in the room too, so they know what to do with it. And that's it. I think I hit them all.
Okay, thank you. Um, thanks to all of you for expressing that. We have ten minutes left for this topic. So I think at this point, it might be helpful to see if there are any clarifying questions from staff and then decide one of the outcomes we wanted to have for this topic was to have a timeline or um, identify some next steps and then figure out what the timeline is going to be for those next steps. So clarifying questions from our staff team?
If I could just weigh in on what I heard and um, Lanny and Cece please um, chime in. Um, so and so there was, there was kind of a couple of conversations here. There's just got a short term and a long term aspect of this. Short term, what I heard is that the council's supportive of um, developing, having me have some administrative authority to develop some work plans, tying that to your priorities. Um, of course, making sure that we're working with our commissioners and getting not getting ahead of them, but having them be a part of the process, um, that there's flexibility in the meeting frequency uh, and and tying that to the work plan, um, and that you're comfortable with um, allowing me to have flexibility so we could build capacity uh, with um, staff. And then what I heard is kind of varying things on on the roles. And so I think that's something that we need to kind of work through when we get through more of the governance conversation. And we'll talk more about kind of the timeline for that. You will have work sessions to really um, put your fingerprints on collectively on what you feel that role is. So I think that's still a little bit in flux. Um, so those are short term things that are happening. Long term, what I want to emphasize is that there is going to be an assessment of some of the opportunities for efficiency to get to um, councillor Duggar's point about how these can be either done differently. Do we have to have them? Why we have them? So really looking at that, and the idea is by the end of the fiscal year to bring you some recommendations so you can give us some guidance. And then we can do an implementation plan um, with that kind of framework, if you will. And some of that could be, hey, you know what? Your boards and commissions are kind of large, and why don't you through attrition, see how we can reduce those? So there could be a variety of things, or there could be some um, consolidation opportunities that we might want to look at over time. And so I envision those coming to you um, within six to nine months. But the short term items that um, uh, we noted, those are really important for us to start to be able to build capacity and to provide clarity to our commissioners, because I think they're searching sometimes for their why. And we want to help them um, figure out kind of what the swim lanes are and what their north star is. So I think you've given us some really good direction to get there. So if I missed something, Lanny or Cece, please let me know.
Uh, Jenny, when you say uh, short term, is that like the next three to six months?
I think that's fair.
Lanny or Cece, anything, any additional questions or comments?
Um, just and not to belabor this, but you know, sort of feel like, you know, want to call out the power dynamic. Um, you know, by having uh, the city manager in charge of work plans. Uh, she's not the one appointing the commissioners and the task force is one under my purview right now and and is squarely, and I'm sure you all have seen and and experienced a little bit of that. Um, it's, we've constantly been as staff pushing to try to establish a work plan and establish a sense of uh, what we are working on to have efficiency of time and all those things. It's a really, really challenging thing to do without council uh, direction and without council taking ownership of that. And without y'all helping, you know, reinforce if Jenny's going to do the work plans, reinforcing those and and blessing them or without some sense of, you know, I guess, direction to the folks that you all are appointing. There's a power dynamic that staff in particular, you know, Jenny and I are not going to be the ones in those meetings typically. Um, it's really challenging for staff to uh, to staff those boards and commissions without um, some clear line of authority, whatever that looks like. So I just want to call that out in the vein of our rules and and put that on the table.
Yeah, the subcommittee, um, the governance subcommittee, actually, we discussed that and I I I did call that out to them. And part of it is developing a communications plan uh, where I would be working with the council liaison so we can kind of together speak with one voice to kind of inform um, all of the commissions on some of the direction gathered here, uh, so we can address some of those power dynamics. And it is a cultural shift, and so it will take time. So again, kind of going back to the 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 marathon versus the hundred yard dash analogy.
Uh, Mayor and then councillor Hassan.
I do want to say though, like, when we gone through appointments, there's not a lot of boarding commission members that have served long term that served under Denny. I mean, so I would say we have a really good, this is a good time. You know, some of the, you know, most of our board members are relatively new. So I don't think they're straddled with this idea of like, this is the way it's always been. So I'm incredibly comfortable with moving through right now. Um, to the to Dan's point, I think what makes me uncomfortable is the staff appointed boards. Because and and to be blunt, you guys miss a lot when you're appointing people when you're not connected to the community. Majority of our executive team does not live here. And so when you put people on boards, you have no idea what their background is. And I feel like I've had to jump in and save us multiple times when staff appoints to boards. So I want that authority to remain with the elected body. We are the closest to the people. And this what I think is a check and balance. I appoint, the council confirms, the city manager does the work plan, I think. And then we get another, the council gets another bite at the apple once we see the city manager's work plan. I don't think council is ready to let go of the liaison role. I listened to all of you talk. I think there's not four voices saying, let's move it. So and perhaps in the spirit of compromise, um, we still with this session, um, when I make the uh, recommendations, we still include council liaisons this year. And maybe is the the compromise, the frequency, like maybe you attend once a quarter. So we could kind of move things going, then we still have the, we still have, you guys still have a an assigned board. You just go less frequently. And then what we should do, in my opinion, is next year, at the end of a year, like, let's have an after action view of how it went and we can make adjustments. Because I I want us to get moving on something. I want, I I don't want, I want that your assignments to start in January with the new boards. Like, I don't want us to wait. I don't know what you mean by year. I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same year, not the fiscal year, but the like calendar year. Okay, that's my clarifying.
And I just wanted to get clarification that for the frequency of board meetings and for the the alternates, that that would be, we'd be able to do that in January?
My sense was that would be the short term, so yes.
Okay, uh, we'll get back to your proposal here in a second, make sure there's agreement on that. Councillor Hassan, did you have another?
Uh, I have a question and a comment. Jenny, when we once spoke, we talked about CDBG funding going through a board or commission. Am I imagining that or no?
No, we had talked about the opportunity to make sure that that goes through it rather than having staff actually do that. And so that if that's something that council would like to take, this probably wouldn't be the forum, but we could, I could present that in a in a way to give you some options.
Okay, so I'm just putting it out.
That could be part of the assessment piece? So yes, you're on the right wavelength.
I just had that note to myself. Um, I I think I I want to just, councillor Tivnan, like the feedback loop, um, I guess what I'm trying to say is like, there are going to be moments and we're going to want to hear from certain boards or commissions. And I say that from like a very personal place, like there's a lot of personal stuff happening right now that's not here, that's very personally impacting me. And so if I want to go to the diversity advisory board to check on those community members that I care about, like, that's kind of where I am right now. So what is the mechanism for that feedback loop or that listening? And maybe it is just that loop, but that's where I get a little like, what does it mean to not send or to not let another person? Not influence, right, but to listen? And so that's just like where my head is kind of stuck is there are moments that we might need to show up for different folks. And so it it's a little personal, but I just, I do want to say that because that's important. Um, my other comment is just ensuring that we have equitable resources. Um, I've saw on all the boards and most of the boards and commissions, I love all of them. Uh, but but you do see sometimes more resourcing and less resourcing. And so just trying to ensure that there is an equitable amount of resources in terms of like budget, staffing. Um, and then Dan, to your comment, like if there are ways that we can provide more clarity, I certainly, I I mean, I think, I don't know that we have the time now, but I'd love to make sure that we are providing that. Um, I do think that our boards and commission members are these amazing people who want amazing work to happen. And we've just not done a good job at communicating what it means and what that looks like. Because it doesn't look like some of the things that they want to do, and that's okay. And we have to be brave enough to say it and say what is possible and what is impossible.
Yeah, one option, um, just to councillor Hassan's um, comment on the feedback loop is, you know, we can work with staff to maybe do something through the IOI quarterly to kind of give you a a pulse check on what's happening. That could also help temper um, the cadence in terms of which council may feel like they need to report back. The other thing I I I want to plug is if you show up to a commission meeting, be mindful. I have the city attorney right next to me, the um, public, you know, open meeting law. Like, so let's say you, three of you or more decide to wake up and go to the same meeting. So again, those are other things to take in consideration. But I understand if there's something kind of unique, right, and one-off that happens. But as a regular um, practice, you have to be mindful of that.
Okay, so to summarize, and I'll I'll check in to make sure we're all in agreement, or at least we have a majority here. So in the short term. So in the short term, the next three to six months, the city manager, you guys are giving her authority to develop work plans in alignment with the, for the boards and commissions in alignment with her work plan. The role, you guys will continue to work on this through the governance process and confirming that. But for the time being, for the next calendar year, that's upon you. The council liaisons will remain and the plan would be for them to participate quarterly until you work through something different in your governance discussion. And then the feedback loop, just to, that could be, Jenny said she could work with staff to help address some of these initial concerns. As like an interim solution until you decide something different, maybe through your governance work. And then long term, over the six, next six to nine months, you'll have an assessment of opportunities and, and potential consolidation discussions. Is everybody okay with this direction? So continued discussion through governance and then these other items, staff has direction.
Just one comment, and maybe I dreamed this. Did we once talk about having the council liaison reports be something that standardizes a council so that we're sharing the same information every time? Okay. Can I just want to put that on the record?
Let's think like, is that necessary though? It's like we're going quarterly. I guess maybe your version of my, what happening in the count, in the staff person might be different.
When? I just wanted to recall.
Yeah, I mean, you're right. We talked about that.
I wing it every time and I don't mind winging it. Don't get me wrong. I just don't want different people. Okay. I don't want.
What you're reporting, not what you're reporting back to council.
Oh, sorry. My reporting, like literally they say, what do you have? And I just swing it.
So what I heard from Jenny though, is that the count, the staff liaisons can work with the counselors to, to help.
That, that's correct. And we have a governance question of defining like what is council items? And is that part of when they, if they choose to report back and we'll be able to address that in early 24.
Okay, great. Okay. And Patricia, did you, did that, whatever was just said, answer whatever question you had? Okay.
Just trying to ensure that staff is allowed to have a neutral place as they're serving and they're not pulled into really speaking to sides. That's very, very important, but their jobs too.
Okay. It's 4:30. Are we good wrapping this one for now? Thank you to Lanny and Cece for being here and helping us through that. We have you guys scheduled for a break. What, is there an update on when, when dinner is supposed to arrive? Cause I know we changed the schedule on you. So 4:45. Do you guys want to start the break and then have just a few minutes to grab dinner when it arrives? Or do you want to just introduce the next topic and get through a little bit more and then we'll start our break? Okay. Then let's go ahead and start the break. And dinner will be here shortly. Okay. I think we are ready to jump back in. We'll need to be efficient with our time as we move through the next two topics to stay on track with our early departure time of 6:30. So we're just running about 10 minutes over. So we will make that up somewhere. All right. I'm going to, I connected with both Bill and Megan prior to the workshop. So I was going to share some themes with you, but they're going to cover it in their presentation. So let's, let's just jump into that, shall we? Take it, take it from here.
There we go. So this evening I'm going to cover three things in this governance, governance update. First, I'm going to talk about the process that we took to get to this point and some of the deliverables that you'll see today. Then we'll talk about a few specific provisions and I'll give the council an opportunity to weigh in and give their feedback on those particular provisions. And then finally, we'll close with next steps and what we have to do to get this project to the finish line. So with that, the first thing I will talk about is the governance subcommittee. You get the next slide? And I wanted to start by putting up the project scope, which was carefully drafted by Counselor Tivnan and agreed upon by the subcommittee. And so you'll see that up there on the board and that was kind of the marching orders behind what we were working towards as we undertook this work. And then the next component you'll see on the slide is four priorities that the subcommittee identified to begin the work. And so that is where we focused our drafting priorities are focused on the four that you see there, which are boards and commissions, proclamations, communications, and then roles and responsibilities. And this was selected after the city attorney's office provided a draft table of contents with a comprehensive list of topics. That's what led the subcommittee to select these four to set, to start the work plan and get the language drafted. Now, the subcommittee has already provided feedback on the boards and commissions language, which was in your packet and you have touched on a number of those topics in the previous hour. And then they were also able to provide feedback on the proclamations language. And I'll solicit the comments from the rest of the council this evening. The third topic, the communications, although the work was completed, we were not able to get to the subcommittee's feedback. So you will not see that it has not yet been incorporated into that particular section. And we have some more work to do in that regard. But regardless, it's in your packet and we'll talk a little bit about that this evening. I guess the last thing I'd like to say is that this project really creates two deliverables. So the Beaverton Code, chapter 2.11 is currently where the rules and protocols for the city council resides. And that is one location that will have to be revised as part of this project. Secondly, the deliverable that we'll be creating, the one that we've been drafting and working on is a new document that will be council rules and protocols that will be adopted by resolution. And the idea there is it's much more comprehensive. It's going to, it's going to cover a much wider range of topics as well. And it's also going to move some things from chapter 211 that don't need to be in the Beaverton Code and put them in a resolution format, which makes it a little easier for the council to take a look at those practices and make sure that they align with, with the council's work each year and allows for an easier process to modify them when, when that makes sense. So those are the two deliverables. And I know that the council is probably a little bit disheartened that it's taken us this long to get to this point, but there's just frankly, so much work going on in the city attorney's office. And we know that this needs a lot more time. And so we're, we're putting that time in now and looking forward to finishing this project early next year in the, in the spring. With that said, we're going to jump into the first major topic, which is the proclamations on the next slide. So again, this is one of the topics that the subcommittee has worked on. Their language has been incorporated. And you can see that the, now what you have up on the screen is a draft version. I would say it's a complete draft and that it does include that subcommittee language. As an overarching goal, the plan with this proclamation section was to capture the different ways that the city currently handles proclamation so that there's kind of a clear roadmap on the different ways that a proclamation can be issued. As you can see, there's four, which is probably where some of the confusion has happened in the past is it can be complicated. And I'll just briefly give a summary of the four different ways. So the first way is something that the subcommittee identified would be really helpful. It identifies this idea of having a proclamation list. And over the course of time, the city council has a set of proclamations that have been routinely issued. The idea is all of those routinely issued proclamations would be on the proclamation list. And so all of those would be issued under the council's authority as council proclamations. And of course, this list could be looked at annually by the council and updated as well. And the process for doing that is also captured in subsection A of the proclamations language. Subsection B recognizes the mayor's authority to issue proclamations solely with her authority out of her office. And again, you see that the proclamations from the mayor, those are often on the meeting. Subsection C is something that was talked about at the governance subcommittee meeting to get her, to get at the issue of how challenging it can be for the council to issue a new council proclamation. Because to do that, the council actually has to have a meeting and then decide that the council as a body wants to issue the proclamation. Then staff would go back and work on that proclamation and bring it to the council at a following meeting. However, that time and process of two meetings doesn't always work when you want to issue a proclamation quickly. So to address that issue, the mayor suggested that we have this subsection C where requests could be made to her office. And then the office of the mayor would technically issue the proclamation. So that's what you'll see in subsection C. And I think that actually might be new. That doesn't capture a process that I think is already going on, but I could be wrong about that. And then finally, subsection D is the process I already described where it takes a couple of council meetings for the council to issue a brand new proclamation under its own authority. So again, the goal was to capture the four different ways that we thought the council could issue proclamations. And then tonight, I'd just like to get all of your feedback on these various avenues and see what other changes might be needed to get this particular section to conclusion.
All right. Well, so there's four areas that you guys already covered, boards and commissions. Where I talked with Megan before this, and we're going to allocate like 30 minutes to talk about this particular topic because there's probably the most content here. So just keep that in mind. Because we want to make sure you also get to the other three or the other two topics aside from boards and, or aside from proclamations in this presentation. So let's, questions, comments from council, Counselor Hassan, Hassan, sorry.
This looks great. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Questions? Yes. Counselor Better.
Was there thought given to guidelines on what we should proclaim and what we should not proclaim from both a practical standpoint and a legal standpoint? Would, otherwise I think these are really great and they're really helpful, but you know, is, is the only consequence political?
There was not discussion around the types of content that should be in allowed in a proclamation. If something came across that was not appropriate from a legal perspective, the city attorney's office would flag it as not an appropriate proclamation. And for some reason it would be, you know, contrary to law, but again, generally, there's nothing in here that restricts the content.
We run, our current practice now is we run everything through the legal department. If we haven't issued it, if we've already issued it and it's already like met that standard, we don't have to. But like they're already engaged in the process. I don't know what the city manager's office is doing when they write proclamations. But for my office, we start with research. We like to see what other communities are doing. We kind of look at the framework. We try to see if it's controversial. And then, you know, if it's from like an obscure group, I generally don't issue them if they're not requested from a community member. Like I don't take a lot of outside national groups, proclamations requests. But I also think, you know, where, where I've seen the flavor that the council wants to do is like, you know, general routine Hispanic Heritage Month, those type of things. You know, I would say the one off ones are hard. You know, I did a one off one with Counselor Kimmy when it was Armistice Day. I've done one with Counselor Teeter when it was proclaiming Jewish Heritage Month. And so I think things come up more than the routine, which is why we wanted you to have another way to get a proclamation through without meeting all of these timelines.
Yeah, I guess I was just concerned. By the way, I fully agree with that. I think these are all really helpful. Is there beyond law, are there tort things that we should be concerned about, right? So one group asks us for a proclamation and we say no. But then we turn around the next week and agree to a proclamation for someone else that's maybe a different. Are we opening ourselves up to, and, and the reason I ask is like, I don't want to cost the citizens, the residents of Beaverton money and through tort and things like that. And so I'm, I don't have the expertise. And so I'm assuming, is that just something that you guys will, we can count on you to advise us on?
If the council's doing the proclaiming, I think that we should have some standards in terms of how we choose. Now, the important part about this is that these are the council's proclamations. There, it's not the situation where anyone who comes in has a right to have it. It's like, no, we choose to do it. So that's what we want to set up as a, a gatekeeping mechanism. Is that this is not an open forum where anyone who wants to come in can say whatever they want for the two minutes. It's something that we control as a form. That's the important part here.
So it's, it's the council versus the city essentially. Is that what you're?
Well, it, it's really, I mean, I'd like to go too much in depth, but it's a question of form and analysis of, is this a public forum or is this a controlled forum? is this a public forum or is this a controlled forum? And you want it to be a controlled forum.
Yes, and the other piece I would say is the way the rules address this. This isn't a community member asking for the proclamation. It's a councillor making a request to either the mayor's office or the entire city council making a decision at a council meeting to issue a council proclamation.
So we're, I'm hearing that we're covered on the content. You're reasonably confident.
Yeah, I think that you're, you're reasonably covered in terms of your discretion and we'll review for anything that creates a problem.
And I'm, I'm good with these. That was my only quick, thank you.
I would say optically, they're giving you the legal answer. I'll give you the other side of that. You know, we're gonna be asking staff that are not politically appointed to work on proclamations that come from the council. And so just thinking about what we're asking our staff to write and do. And that might be the, how we decide to go through either channel. Because, you know, a lot of long-term public employees view themselves as nonpartisan. And so of course, we can always direct them to do what we say or want. It's just a filter that I typically use. When I'm thinking about which forum that we're gonna like move down. So there's the legal one, then I think there's the optics one.
So just in fairness to the rules and process check, mayor's responding to questions because you issue proclamations out of mayor's office. So I just wanna, wanna make sure we're sticking to our guidelines that felt appropriate there because, direct question. All right, councillor Kimmy.
Thank you. Hello. My question is just the procedure. So how do you put it on the agenda, the work session? Do you have to go through consent from the council to put it on the work session? Or do you talk to city manager to put it on the agenda for discussion? How do you put it on if it's a council proclamation?
I understand that not having the draft in front of me is the same way that you would typically put anything on the agenda, which would be under your council items and you would make a request.
So you have to do it on the dais, discuss, and they say, I want this proclamation to be discussed next time around.
Yes, because you're adding to your existing list that you had given direction to. That was capped at a certain number and there were specific items that the council directed me to do as the council body. So anything beyond that, you would need to bring up and get the council to agree to that.
And I, and I think the language here is important. Council proclamations from time to time. This can't be like twenty-seven requests every meeting. So just thinking about what are the most important for us to speak as a body and how we're doing that. Because it also is like very staff intensive, whether it's Jenny or my team, to do proclamations. It has to meet the legal standard. We have to do research. I mean, every proclamation that's issued unless it's recurring, at least on my team, is probably five to eight hours worth of work. Then we have to work with the city recorder to get it on the agenda. Then it has to be votes in either way. So I just want you guys to take into account the amount of staff time is required for every proclamation, which is why Jenny requested a list of ones from us. And so using that as a filter as well.
Jenny, just to make sure I got this right, that on the agenda, they would request under council communication under that section, is that right?
It's council items.
Council items, thank you.
And then I just want to supplement one thing that I did say. There is one area and it would be covered under D. But there are, from time to time, there'll be a ballot measure typically. Maybe it's a school bond or, you know, a library levy would be a good example. And the council may want to pass a resolution in support of that ballot measure. That is one that is, I, I want to make sure that you understand that staff cannot work on that. It, it is something that council can work on and you will use your own resources. And that conversation would be as an example, council new business or council items. I think we should pass a resolution in support of X. What do you all think? You'll get the thumbs up. And then something could be prepared by the elected officials and it would be brought back by the elected officials. We are not through Oregon law allowed to work on partisan stuff using city resources or city time. So that's the one exception that I wanted to bring up.
Councillor Tivnan?
Thank you councillor Hassan for this. It's awesome. Yeah, and I think that the other piece of this that is helpful to, to kind of parse out is that you can make a request from the dais in council items for something to be considered. Or you can also use an annual review. And to me, those would be like something that, no, we should be making this proclamation every year around this thing, which I think is probably going to be rarer because the list we have of proclamations is pretty, pretty built out and well thought out. But things happen and new norms crop up. And then the other one might be something that's really time sensitive, like pandemic related. Like something where you wanted to thank emergency responders during the pandemic, something that's extremely time and place. That could be made from the dais and it's like, yeah, let's jump on this. Let's make this happen. But the, the thing that I, I think is most helpful for me in this is that there's going to be an annual conversation to, to make sure that these are dialed and they're reflecting our values, that we've, we've got everything kind of present and accounted for and just allows us to make room and space for folks to weigh in on that. So that, I think that was the, the, the point that I was most excited to see get kind of defined in here was how we get these things done.
Okay, others from the council who want to weigh in on this topic?
I'll chime in. I just want to say I like this and I like having the annual list that can be very predictable and that we can review.
City attorneys, any different further direction?
No, I think it was pretty clear. Thank you, council.
Great. See, you guys made up that ten minutes and no big deal. Okay, great. Next topic then.
The next topic is what was identified as priority number three by the subcommittee. And that is council relations and communications. And this is section four in your packet. I put the, the subsections, the large subsections are up there on the slide for you as well. But the goal here was to set communication guidelines for council member interactions with various groups, such as other council members, staff, and then the media is also included. So one note, and I mentioned this earlier, it's important, so I'm going to mention it again. The subcommittee did not have a chance to have its feedback incorporated into this. So I expect there's going to be quite a bit of change in addition to what we all discuss here this evening as well. And we just ran out of time frankly, before, before this, before this meeting. The other kind of piece I would note is that the basis for the entire section is this idea of mutual respect. So you'll probably see that threading throughout section four. And then also, this is a section that incorporates roles and responsibilities throughout as well. So you'll see comments like not interfering with the day-to-day operations of the city manager and requests, limiting requests for two hours of staff time or more. All of those are, is that kind of balance of roles and responsibilities that the council requested that doesn't show up in just one section, but shows up throughout the entire council role. So those are just a couple of examples in this particular section. And then with that, Jenny, is there anything you would like to speak to?
Um, yeah, I think you'll see some things that are a little different on here. And we, we have kind of noodle around them a little bit in some of our conversations, but really this goes to capacity. But if you look in on item D, you'll see that it'll comment questions from individual council members requiring two or more hours of staff time that will require approval of the council. This is some food for thought for you around this topic of using staff time wisely and making sure that when you're asking for questions through me, that if they take an extraordinary amount of time, that it may be something that I need to punt to the agenda. If that's the pleasure of the council. And then you'll notice in H, we have the same kind of guidelines, if you will, for the city attorney's office as well because they do get asked for research and questions from time to time. So this is really something for you to react to. You might want to think about putting your own fingerprints on it, but it is something that we haven't really talked collectively together. So I wanted to just note that on this. And really, I think just as an aside, having some of this penned up paper is really important, particularly for our staff. It, it's much more tangible for them because they can read something on paper, go, oh, okay, that makes sense to me now. And I think likewise, it could be helpful for onboarding new councillors and of course, existing council.
Okay, so we have about fifteen minutes for discussion on this topic. Councillor Hartmire Craig, kick this off.
Actually, I just have a question. And is it fifteen minutes just for section four point one or is it for the whole?
For this whole council relations and communications.
Okay, so I think we have more, right, from Megan? But my question is actually around the two-hour thing. Would that just be kind of like a gut reaction from city attorney or cities, city manager's office? Like based on the nature of the question, if you're like, oh, this one's meaty. And, and the response might be, hey, this actually brings us up at council items.
That's a good summary, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Um, what was some, what were some of the subcommittee thoughts that were not included in this document? Do we know that? Or can we know that?
No, because although the work was prepared, we did not even have a chance to discuss it. We spent all the time on proclamations and the subcommittee, or I'm sorry, in the board and commission language in section three.
Okay, great, thanks.
Councillor Hessen?
Uh, councillor Tivnan, this is what I witnessed at an MPAC meeting, so I don't want to take credit for the, I think these are things that happen in meetings. I, I think this is a great, I really loved this. It was really helpful for me. There was one really teeny tiny thing I just wanted to call out. Oh gosh, where did it go? Four point two F, this is so tiny. I just want to say that eye contact in some cultures and folks who have like neurodiversity is not like normal. So I just wonder if we can use more sensitive language because again, eye contact is not really something that's common. Um, I mean, I think this is a really great first step. I don't like see anything that like screams at me. Oh, sorry, four point two, part F. It just says to give eye contact and active listening. It's so minor. But I think this is a really great first step in helping us understand like how we work together and how we function.
Um, I do want to say that the council or the subcommittee didn't get to weigh in on this, but we did frame the conversation. And one of the most things that we thought on the subcommittee we want to address on here is preparedness of the councillors. And really looking at subsection B. I've heard multiple councillors sit down at the dais and say, I didn't even read the packet. And not only is that disrespectful to each other and the way that it comes out with lots of questions from the council, where those of us that do prepare, we have to sit through questions that you're asking that could have very easily been read in the document. And so given that there's seven of us and seven voices, that this docu, we wanted to have in there the agreement among the seven of us to do the prepared work. Staff put in copious amounts of time to make our agenda packets, to do briefings and one-on-ones. And it's, it's an interesting thing that I, of doing this for ten years, I've never quite experienced. And there are times where I don't read the packet fully either, but I just think about like, just so you know, it's noticeable when we don't do it. Staff know by the questions we ask. And so having an agreement amongst each other to hold each other accountable, particularly when you're asking questions about stuff already that's been prepared. It's different if you're like, I want to put it on the record. I want people to know. But I think like that is an area that the seven of us, myself included, having a baby, I don't read everything verbatim. But I think we have to do better because it's pressuring from the staff is starting to comment and on our collective not being prepared at the dais. And so that is one important piece that while we didn't read this language, if they're speaking the language, that's what we directed the city attorney to have in this document.
Other comments, questions about this section?
One more. The one on the other page around limiting individual contact with city officers and employees. I think that all of us come with such different relationships with staff. That's gonna be hard for me. I think we're going to police each other. But I also, if this is like a rapid shift in how we interact with the staff here, like I don't want staff to like, sometimes when they see me, they run or they like move. And so I don't want it to like, you know, it's going both ways. I, I think we need to leave room for pleasantries. We're all in this building all the time, not just me. And so making sure that we have clear communication to our staff that it's not like pleasantries and like, how are your children? And so I just, I'm worried the way this language is, it could be weaponized in a way of like, I'm sitting in the break room heating my lunch up and you know, Lee runs the other way. I'm just concerned.
I, I agree. I think it could be something as simple as be mindful of contacts with city officers, not the limiting thing. So you're just mindful that you're not influencing the policy decisions that are gonna come up. So, good point.
That was gonna be my comment too. Just seeing staff all the time out in restaurants or at events or the library and just, we have lives outside of these roles too. And yeah, don't want to make it weird. Just want to be a human and not talk about policy. That's perfectly doable.
Okay, councillor Duggar.
One thing that's not clarified, I think we probably need to at least think about, is there situations. Uh, I know councillor Hassan and I were at a TriMet event here at city council and the mayor wasn't there because you were out of town. And traditionally, I think it would have been an opportunity for someone from the city to welcome all the speakers and just, just kind of take on the mayor's role, which unquestionably is hers when she's here. But that didn't happen because I, I didn't know about it. I don't think you know about it. And I didn't, wasn't even sure if someone knew that I was gonna be there. So I don't know if that needs to be clarified in there, like a role of, or a hierarchy or like, not just on when we shouldn't speak on behalf of the city, but when we should. Because that felt like a miss to me and, and I would have been happy to do something or, you know.
Well, in that particular situation, they, like, I thought I was gonna be here. They weren't, they asked me not to. But if it's helpful, I mean, what we try to do and what Jen does on my behalf is when I'm absent at an event, we generally contact the council president first, then whoever is in order. And so I think we're kind of doing that now, but I, I'll, I'll work.
And I'm good with that. Like, if you're good with it, like, I don't think we need, I just, like, I don't want, just, I don't want to miss those things in the future, so.
Is there a, a line added to this that you think would be helpful or you?
I, I think what, so this, this was an interesting one too because I wasn't aware of that event. But typically what the mayor and I do is we try to make sure that there's a run-of-show that we're emailing out to the council so they're aware. And this one was a miss, but that's actually just more of a good practice and protocol. So we're going to be endeavoring to do that. I think an example would be at the shelter. You all should have gotten the run-of-show so you knew like whether you had a speaking engagement or not. And in case you didn't, because I've been asked very similar questions from other councillors. So that's kind of what we're trying to do from a protocol standpoint.
Yeah, question from?
Um, I had a question on section four point four, section D. It says a council member may solicit assistance or hire another person to handle email responses or other council matters. But the council member must ensure steps to keep confidential, whatever, whatever. I think it'd be really weird if one of us hired someone to do our email. Um, so I don't, I mean, I'd be kind of curious what others think. But I, I would recommend we take that out. I think it'd be really strange for a councillor to hire someone. I think that maybe it could say something about like if there was council support staff or something, right? That, that, that they could have access to the email. But I, I think we need to be careful that we're not like, because then what? I create a really weird employee, employer relationship with a community member? I don't know. That one, I just kind of recoiled on.
Okay, councillor Hessen?
I just wanted to add to councillor Duggar's point. I don't think this is an item that needs to go here, but Jenny, I'll let you decide. I know I've talked to you about like run-of-shows for events so we know what our role is. I know I've gone to things and not known whether I'm speaking. Don't, doesn't matter either way. So I don't know if that's something that needs to be explicit, but it will help because sometimes we don't always know when we're going to things.
Yeah, I don't think I need this in the document just for point of a clarification, but that needs to be a routine practice.
Could you weigh in on this, like weird hiring? So, I mean, I feel the same way she does because I also think it'd be a liability if it's a pseudo employee and like.
That's why it's a draft. Sorry, that probably shouldn't have been in there.
Yeah, that, um, I'm imagining that's for like Portland-sized cities or an influx of, of mail. But even then, I'd rather my electeds respond to their own email. Okay, so there's one in here. It is four point two point E. And I appreciate where this is going. Council members are encouraged to honestly share concerns and opinions with each other, personal comments and actions that are intended or could reasonably be construed to harm other council members, staff. or could reasonably be construed to harm other council members, staff, community members are best avoided. Um, I agree with all that. Um, but where it says the council president may take an active role upon request in facilitating or mediating conflict or harm caused by or between council members, I think it's a lot to ask our council president. Um, and I'm curious what our current council president thinks this, but, but also just if this is, if that, i- if that should be in there or not, because that seems like a skill set to me for someone to be able to facilitate or mediate, not something you should just automatically expect someone to do because they've assumed the role of council president.
All right, other questions, comments on this section? Anything related to council relations and communications?
I have one.
Yes, Council Kim.
Um, so same in line with your council. Councilor Tivnan, um, so if there's a conflict between council members, who do we talk to? Uh, who do we go to? If there's a problem, so then what is the course of action if that happens? I'm just saying, if it happens, so then you go to city manager, you go to city attorney, then what happens? I want to know for the future, for the reference, if something happens.
So sometimes it depends on the topic. My, um, experience has been that typically, um, if there's an issue, for instance, you've adopted a certain, um, council relation protocol and someone maybe is not adhering to it. Typically, I've seen it where the mayor has actually called down the document that mayor would, would counsel that particular, um, counselor on the item. If it's like, for instance, the mayor herself, then it could be the council president or the, um, vice mayor, depending on the arrangement. If it's something that is more significant, then it could, then it would be, um, an ethical issue or maybe a legal issue, then the counselor would be encouraged to speak with the city manager and the city attorney um, on that issue. And then we would, we'd deal with that. That's just one way I've seen it handled.
So you go to mayor or council president first?
Typically, if it's something that is like in violation of your protocols, you are, you are, um, you're working together as peer to peer. And so that's not my role to come in between that. At least that would be my preference is that you, you counsel each other. Um, but if it's something that is legal or there's an ethical violation, then of course your city attorney or city manager is going to want to have a conversation with you about that.
I nominate the chief police.
Okay. So just a time check, we're at our time for this particular topic. Are there other remaining questions or comments? Yeah.
I do think there's one more around the media. Um, one, I want council to make sure they look at it. So we come back for future conversations. As a general practice, I never appear in the media without telling the city manager. And I'm often well-staffed, well-prepared, not just from my own staff, but there's interactions often with the PIO as well. Um, really making sure that like the messaging coming out. And so it, it, the subcommittee also directed the city attorney to add this, that if you're going to appear in the media, even from a personal capacity about a city issue, we need to be like having the city manager know. So they could help and do all those things. But that doesn't mean she's going to write your talking points and do all that, but it's a professional courtesy.
Quick clarifying question, comment? If we're talking to the media and not related to the city, then that's not related, right? I mean, right?
I mean, I, why are they talking to you if you're not an elected official?
I'm amazing.
Well, I'm just, let's just disagree for one second. Um, and just say like, are you being empowered to talk to the media because of your position? That's the filter you should be using. That doesn't mean she has to agree with what you're saying, but like, if you are speaking on Nike's behalf, no. But if you're being asked because your counselor is on Beaverton City Counselor, you need to tell her. It's a courtesy.
Okay, I guess my comment is like a- as a person who comes from a specific community or several communities, if I'm being asked to speak, I, and I'm not speaking on behalf of the city. Is, is that making sense? Like that? I can courtesy tell you because I see that it's.
I, I think anytime a counselor is engaged by the media, regardless of whether it's in as a counselor or individually, a courtesy to me would be wonderful because somehow it's going to loop back to me and there might be some information that might be helpful for you.
Okay, other comments, questions? City Attorney Coroner, do you guys have what you need to work with the governance subcommittee on this topic or any clarifying questions?
I think we do. I think we do. We definitely have some good guidelines and I'm sure the subcommittee will have more to weigh in as well.
Okay, then let's shift to our last topic here.
Okay.
Yeah, so the last topic is going to be the financial outlook.
Oh, no, that's fine.
The last, not the last topic.
The last step, I'm sorry, the last priority.
I'm like, I'm going to wrap it up super fast so that Jenny can move on because she's. Okay, so the next topic, I just wanted to highlight the fact that the subcommittee did address and identify roles and responsibilities as being key to, you know, further flesh out through these documents. I mentioned it earlier and I'll just mention it again, that there's not one particular section in either Beaverton Code two eleven or these council rules that is going to be like this list of roles and responsibilities. So as you're reading through any drafts that come out of these documents, you'll see that going through as a thread and you'll see different aspects of the city manager's authority versus the mayor's versus the counselors and the council members throughout the document. Um, and of course, we're always going back to the charter, which is really the only place that has that actual list of what is the city manager's purview versus the mayor's purview. So, um, with that, I will quickly move on to the next steps, which I'm sure you are all wondering.
I do want to just see if there are any, just in fashion with the rest of the format, if there are any questions or comments. Again, this is once throughout, so. Any specific questions before we move on?
A council president role, that was the only one I didn't see.
It's touched on briefly in the charter and to the extent it needs to be fleshed out further, we could do that in the, in the rules.
I, I, I remember hearing a little bit of that in the, maybe a year ago, if I remember quickly, just having clarity on that role.
Any other questions, comments before we wrap this portion up?
We not talking about three, right? That was at the earlier conversation.
The boards and commissions?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now we'll wrap it up.
Okay, on the last slide, I will talk just briefly about the next steps. You'll see that, of course, one of the important things, I've mentioned this before, that, um, we haven't had a chance to meet with the subcommittee to talk about section four. So in, over the course of the next few months, we will engage in that work. And then early, early winter twenty twenty four, we're going to complete the drafts of both of the deliverables I've talked about, the Beaverton Code two eleven. And to be clear, the sections that you're seeing today are going to appear in the resolution document. So this is in the brand new document. You'll also see that comprehensively and then we'll move forward with some work sessions. And we'll all get to talk about this many more times before the project concludes. And again, the goal there is spring twenty twenty four. So, you know, when, I believe summer is technically June twentieth, so it's got to happen before then to, to be spring twenty twenty four.
Uh, I've got one quick question. Oh, you want to go ahead, Council? Okay. Okay, um, I meant to ask this question just a minute ago. Uh, but it's about the council interactions with staff. One of the things that I really enjoy being able to do is having, have a ride along with police or, um, like talk with, uh, some of Tim, Tim's staff on teaching me about water, water infrastructure or something like that. If those are worked through you, Jenny, um, is that something that would still be welcome?
Yes, as, as a courtesy, just work through me and then I can make the magic happen.
Okay, thanks.
And I hope this doesn't make anyone's hair catch on fire, but just an observation that we do have an election coming up. And it, um, I can't remember when the filing deadline is. I think it's in March, like March fourteenth or something sticks out to me for some reason. And it's possible to stick the landing in time for people to have that in their packets of, um, paperwork that they get. Fantastic. Um, but this could just be something for the city recorder's office that when we do finalize them, if all the candidates who have, uh, their name in the race could get a copy.
Hey. So you guys have your timeline outlined and then also driving towards, could it be done prior to elections? Anything else on this topic? All right, now we're five minutes ahead. Wonderful. Uh, Jenny, you're giving the financial outlook, part one. Is that right?
Uh, yes, that's correct.
Right.
All right. And just to, um, remind council, we also have another bite at this apple tomorrow. So if we don't get through everything, um, we'll be able to discuss it, uh, tomorrow as well. Um, but in your slides, you have, um, a chart, a graph here that I want to go over and really kind of set the table on what our situation is, what the kind of drivers are, um, understand the assumptions that went into the forecast. Uh, and then allow you to ask, um, any kind of clarifying questions. So this is a ten year forecast, a five year look behind, a five year look forward ahead. It assumes no structural corrections, which is why it's a little daunting to look at. Um, there are no structural corrections in twenty four, twenty five and beyond, to be clear. So I want to orient you to the, to the graph. So your green line, um, is the revenue, your expenditures are the blue line. And as a reminder, seventy percent of our costs are personnel related. So we are in the people business, takes people to provide the type of services that we give. Um, and the lines below, that is our fund balance or, um, reserves. So the yellow line is our target reserve. We shoot for eleven percent of expenditures. Our target is seventeen percent. And then the black line, um, is really what our ending found fund balance will be. Again, if our situation is left uncorrected and you see that line slowly going down as you hit, um, uh, fiscal year twenty eight. Uh, so you also can notice if we're backing up to fiscal year, um, nineteen, that from nineteen all the way up to fiscal, uh, year twenty two, you see how, um, revenues are kind of slowly climbing, but then you see that expenditures are outpacing revenues. And that's pre-COVID and then moving into COVID. So we did have some revenue decline. But I also want you to remember that this council or the council prior to you, um, wanted to, um, hold the line, wanted to make sure that services remained un, um, not disrupted. And so we went ahead and made no changes in our personnel or services. And folks around us were either furloughing, they were contracting services. So that eventually caught up with us and, um, lo and behold, here we are, uh, now with some deficit challenges. And so I wanted to just kind of talk a little bit about the assumptions in this graph with you. Um, and some things I wanted to tell you that were positive, um, in this is that you'll see that, um, in the some situations, our revenue line, um, was better. So if you look in fiscal year ending in twenty three, um, our property tax was coming in a little bit over eight hundred thousand dollars higher than our revised budget. Business licenses were stronger. They were about eighty four thousand higher. Um, franchise fees were also doing well, um, almost to the tune of about three hundred a thousand dollars higher. And then you get site development fees, which, um, were coming in at about one point four million dollars higher. So we did a really good job and we were also, um, making sure to tighten our belts during that time too. And so you'll see expenditures dropped. And so we made sure that we were holding vacancies. We weren't expending, um, all of our contracts if we didn't have to. So we really held the line there. We also had a number of turnovers, um, in terms of vacancies. Uh, and we had a lot of positions that were open and that really allowed us last year or this current fiscal year to be able to take some of those vacancies um, and not fund them going forward in order to close that ten million dollar gap that we did. So you see two lines cross together, which means we closed the budget gap. That's your adopted, uh, twenty four fiscal year twenty four budget. And then looking out, you can see those lines are spreading apart. So next year, uh, we're going to be facing a four point eight million dollar budget gap. And that will continue to grow, um, to the tune of about seven or eight million dollars to nine million dollars and then ultimately, um, to around, uh, eleven million. And so, and again, if that's not structurally corrected, if you move to your next slide, I wanted to make sure that you also had a numerical representation of that graph. Some people, um, will be able to process that better. And I think it's important, um, again, to just kind of see what's the actuals, what's adopted and then what's projected. So this is really just another representation of the visual that you saw. But more importantly, if you go to the next slide, I think these assumptions are important for you to take into account. So your operating expenses in this forecast assumes a five percent growth in salaries, a one percent in your health and other related benefits and a three percent in pers expenses every other year. And I wanted to translate, what does that mean? What do those percentages mean? So for your, um, increase in salaries, that's between one point eight million dollars and up to two million dollars in addition uh, expenses. So that's what that order of magnitude is when I say five percent in salaries. Um, health increases, those are increasing between thirty and thirty three thousand dollars. That's that one percent. And then the three percent every other year in pers, that's anywhere between six hundred to seven hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Uh, and so I want to make sure that you understand the order of magnitude when I'm sharing these increases with me, with you. Um, your future years, so from twenty seven and beyond, we're assuming that salaries are going to go up five percent and that assumes merit increases as well. Um, many of these, um, drivers of costs are also related to bargaining contracts. So keep that in mind. And then of course, pers is attached to salary. So when your salaries go up, pers goes up correspondingly. Um, and materials and services also are going up three percent per year. And then also transfers. And for folks that don't know what transfers are, those are really, um, our internal support, um, mechanisms. So think about, uh, things like um, fleet, maintenance, things of that nature, that cities, uh, city departments needs internal support for. And so those are also increasing. Uh, and then there's also impacts on the revenue side that you probably should be aware of. So the average growth of property tax is about three point six percent, um, over the past five years. And please know that property tax makes up about forty six percent, I believe, of the general fund. And that's a significant chunk of change. And all of your other revenue sources are relatively small when you kind of imagine a pie. Um, three percent growth for all over, all other revenue, but there are some key revenues that are on decline. Uh, so we've got our cable, um, TV revenue, that's on decline by three percent. A one percent decline in the cigarette tax and a five percent decline in franchise fees. And what this is telling us is people are just doing things differently. They may not be using these type of things as much as they used to. So there's a great fluctuation in that. So that's something to be cognizant of because well, for the most part, we can pretty much trend property tax. Your other slices of the pie are up and down. Um, fees for services makes, and those are the fees that you have control over. You'll have a free fee study presented to you, the results this spring. Those are fees that you establish and set, but that makes up a very, very small sliver of your revenue pie. Um, and that's why I wanted to point out to you that, you know, nearly almost fifty percent of the revenue that you get is from property tax alone. And so you don't have very many sources um, to go to when we're trying to pay for, um, services. And then I think on the next slide, just really, um, quickly is, you know, modest revenue, revenue growth, that's kind of just going ahead at a snail's pace. It's not, it's not like in an upward trajectory. Um, again, changing trends are driving some of those other revenue sources for us. And we're going to continue to see the salaries increase, um, as long as we're having some inflationary issues that we're trying to deal with. This is also going to impact your materials and supplies, your contracts, um, any other type of, um, operating expenses that you need uh, to be able to provide services. We're really watching the healthcare and, um, retirement. All of the things that are related to benefits and salaries, unfortunately, and those are a lot of uncontrollable costs for you are driving some of your budgetary issues. And then the one thing I do want to point out is that, you know, the operating expenses to run day to day, um, materials, those are increasing, but some of the other drivers of that is deferred maintenance. And I think that's really important when you think about facilities. We have a number of public facilities that we manage. You had a facilities master plan talk to you about future needs. There's going to be more important to strategically start to invest in the assets that you have. Otherwise, your deferred maintenance is going to drive your costs and, and you're going to end up having double, triple the amount of expenses if you don't make intentional investments in some of your facilities and other, um, assets throughout the city. So that's another kind of driver of costs that will creep up, um, on you over time. So I know that was a really kind of very quick clip, um, at the, uh, financial outlook, but I wanted to just kind of set the table going into our budget discussion. We'll talk a little bit more tomorrow about budget framework, budget development and the approach. But I wanted to make sure you had a good handle on what we're going to be, um, tackling next year and then some of the key drivers of why we're kind of in this situation we are and that we're going to see more of this on the horizon.
Okay, so we have twenty five minutes to gather up some council questions or have council. Okay, so we have twenty five minutes to gather up some council questions or have council discussion. And um, and then this part of the presentation will, will pick up with this tomorrow. So any questions, comments? Yes, Council Heart Manfred.
Thank you. I have a lot of questions, but like it, it's hard to not like go to the dark place again. Um, like next year doesn't look so bad, but like we have to get this under control and um I'm writing notes to Dan of like, how do you fix this magic, please? But I think that like, you know, us getting creative about finding new revenue streams, right? You see a lot of things that like you're saying, people aren't doing things anymore. And like, I'm glad to see the cigarette tax revenue down. That's positive thing. But it does have like that financial impact on our city. So I'm kind of curious, um. And maybe you'll tell us more tomorrow, but like, I mean, I'm very much like, so what do we do, right? Because like we, we did make some structural changes this year, but they're not enough because we can see that like our expenses are just outpacing our revenue. So I'm super curious to hear, you know, what, what our plans are as a city, what we can do as, as your council to to help advocate, you know, like we know that any money that our, our amazing lobbyist mayor um and may be able to go out and get us are going to be one time funds, right? Like it's, it's the state won't fix our city budget issues. Um, and so I guess I'm just I'm getting pessimistic and that's not my nature. So I, I, you know, um excited to hear more and also like know what can we do as an active role as in council to help.
Yeah, I think tomorrow um will be an opportunity and even we can take this time now if uh to talk about some of the revenue strategies as part of the fiscal sustainability planning conversation, you had the subcommittee come out and identify some um key revenue opportunities and we'll revisit that um in more detail. Part of it, of course, is the fees. We're also doing a number of assessments to try to shore up some um cost containment on the service side. Um, the other piece of it was the council talked about potentially uh property tax um levy and what would be involved in that. I've had um other individual counselors want to explore other options as well. So those may be um brought to the table. But some of that discussion um will need to begin probably at the end of the budget adoption. And I have a timeline to show you tomorrow about when we want to start those conversations and also start mapping out a timeline and timeline for discussion with the community, but also timeline of when you need to have a conversation officially with the voters about how you want to proceed. Uh, and I think that we have to be sensitive to about what our partners are doing because our partners are also in a very similar situation. And so we'll have an opportunity this summer to map out what that looks like of what all of our special districts are doing, their timeline. And then how does that strategically work for the city?
Okay, thank you. And I think just another thing that I kept thinking about as we were talking is this concept of do less to go faster. Right? And so like just being really like conscientious with the work that we choose to do. Can we make more like I'm thinking, and I think in the deferred maintenance conversation, like that makes a lot of sense to me. Like let's make sure that we're taking care of the assets that we have now because I do think we've seen it across the region of deferred maintenance then becomes this huge expense and like we could really put our city in peril for that. Um, so where we can like also kind of using that concept of doing less. Um, not in like a maintenance, but maybe just in our programs and projects and you know, I, I don't know, I'm just trying to think about it may not also be new revenue, right? There may just be other ways of, of operating that we have to consider.
Yeah, you have, um, that really speaks to the organizational capacity and a lot of things that you're talking about are more productivity related. So when we say do less, it's allowing us to just be intentional in our focus on the other things and actually do them quite well and do them in the most efficient way. And then you, you end up having additional bandwidth that you could spend on something else uh that could either result in monetary savings or also productivity savings. And I think that's what you'll hear in our organizational update conversation with the department head team. You'll hear about what's going well and then where they're having some headwinds. And it will be to that um place of needing the council to be very intentional about what their North Star is and sticking to it.
Okay, um, I'm not sure who was first between the two of you, but uh councillor Tivna and then councillor Hassan, then councillor Duggar. Oh, councillor Duggar second. Okay, councillor Tivna, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, wow, so much here. Uh, so this slide, the scary slide, we saw this last year too, which was the big wake up call. Can you confirm, before I go into my question, can you confirm if if we can make these invert? Like if we make all the right decisions together, can we successfully make this invert and then balance out?
I think that on devils in the details, I think it depends on what um strategies you implement in terms of revenue because you've, you've got a, you've got a number of things going on here, right? You have to be able to have enough um revenue to be able to pay for the services that you want to provide as a council and understanding clearly what you feel your core services should be. Um, what you do, you want to continue to be in the business of doing. If it's, if it's everything that you're doing right now, you're going to need a significant um chunk of change in order to do that. The other thing that we haven't talked about is the replenishment of the reserves. But so you also, in addition to that, if you don't change the course on what you're providing in terms of services or how you're providing them, you may not be able to close the gap on the, on the reserves. So um, I think you can, yes, and get there. I think it's going to take time, but I think this council needs to really think um a lot about what they want to be in the business of doing and what they don't. And there will have to be some trade offs. And a lot of it is the how in which you provide those services. Um, and then what services? A great example would be, we've now, we're in the process of opening a shelter. We are in the homeless services business and that is something that we, we absolutely need to be in, but that you're adding that to another, that's another service level, right? So again, taking in mind the, the waters that you're now stepping into, is there anything else that maybe you want to step away from or do differently? Those are the conversations that we need to have as we're trying to actually figure out how much um of a structural revenue change you need. And then, because we also have to talk about the expenditure component as well.
Yeah, that part.
Yeah, there's that part.
Um, so I, I think that that absolutely, I, I agree. That is a conversation we need to have. I'm assuming that's not uh for the retreat thing.
No, that'd be more of a future budget conversation.
Yeah, and uh, and almost a higher level than the budget conversation is just these fundamental philosophical conversations on what is a city um obliged to provide for its people. Um, so, so understanding when that conversation can take place and how it syncs up with budgeting. Uh, that, that's something that came to mind. Another thing that came to mind was uh over the summer in August, when things were quiet and we were taking some time. I took an opportunity to go out and tour some of our public works facilities and see our folks in action. Um, doing everything from scoping out our uh, our water uh pipes and making sure everything was working correctly and, and in good shape and learning about just how many we have below our streets. Um, to the, the folks that take care of our trees and uh catalog every single one of them and, and um are like in charge of making sure that they're in good shape and planting new ones. To the folks that are cutting out uh old, old sidewalks and putting in ADA improvements. Um, and to the folks that take care of our street uh lights, the signals and, and it's amazing the amount of work that goes into all of this stuff, but it's all existing infrastructure except for the ADA improvements. And the question I have is, I, I've seen what deferred maintenance looks like when you let it go too far. And the city of Portland, there's parts of it that will never go back to being um good again, but it, it's just patching at this point because it's too expensive to truly fix the pavement. And I would love it if we never got to that place, but it takes um seeing it way far off in the, in the future and uh preventing it from happening. And I, I think that's the conversation in some ways that we're having today is around deferred maintenance and the, and the fact that it can, it can lead you down a road to where you can never even afford it. Let alone make trade offs to make it happen. Um, but the, the other place I go to is we, in addition to figuring out these problems, we do have a burgeoning community. We do have in migration. Um, w- we've got planning that we have to do. We have capital improvement projects that we have to do. We have streetscape improvement projects that we want to do. And having a better idea of what the long term implications are of some of these capital improvement projects and what the, what the maintenance looks like for them over time. Uh, and what that adds to public works and the, the um the, the strain on the already strained resources that we have and taking care of what we've got, I think is something that would personally really helped me figure out, is this a priority? Given the true and total cost off into the future. Um, so baking more of that language, I think just into helping us think through some things in terms of how hard we're stepping on the gas pedal on certain projects. And then the last thing I'll say is around Cooper Mountain and all of the concept planning that we're doing around it. Um, I don't, I just realized in the course of this conversation, I don't have a really good idea of the chicken and egg nature of how, how funding works around bringing in ten thousand new residents and oh, over what period of time. And I know that that, the Cooper Mountain that we're planning for is years off into the future and that we're still in the conceptual planning stage, but having a sense around uh operations and maintenance of, of pulling in an entirely new um part, part of town i- is something I think we should probably start having those conversations now because at some point it's, it's going to hit on here. It's just when, when does it get incorporated?
Okay, councillor Duggar, councillor Hassan, uh mayor, and then councillor Kimmy.
I will keep this as limited as I can. What I would love to see, and I don't know, maybe this is for tomorrow, are uh, how can I put this? Portland's changing their former government, right? Same, same exercise we went in, they're taking two years. We all know this. We took a few weeks, excuse me. I don't know that we've optimized everything. I'll give you an example. Um, we like the expenditure levels that require city council review. Is that optimized? Do we really need to, you know, should we empower Jenny to sign a contract at a certain level? Because it doesn't take us a whole lot to review something in, on the council agenda. But there's a lot of staff time that goes into prepping for that, right? And I don't think we've optimized kind of those things still for our, our form of government. So I think number one, I would love to see recommendations on that. There's tons of them, right? There's, there's operational, there's n- no doubt things in Bill's department. There, there's another thing I said, I would love to see us take a re- uh renewed focus on that. Let me see, I, I would love it also, maybe this is a question for tomorrow, maybe it's a question for a future. I know that there's work in things like our procurement of sources of, of services and things like that that are happening. I would love to get an update on some of the operational stuff that aren't necessarily our lane but impact our decision. And here's where I'm going with that. I feel like I'm asked as a member of the budget committee, as a city councillor to vet a budget that I don't have operational knowledge of its impact of what happens, right? Like we asked a lot of people like me in our budget committee and our councillors to really weigh in. And it, and it's based a lot on trust, right? But I also, I don't have the operational knowledge and I've been doing this for years before I was on the, even the city council, right? Like it's a lot to go in. Uh, and so I think some of that kind of contextualizing will help me feel a little bit better about that. Um, I also wonder if there's an opportunity for us to get creative. Uh, it's been kind of a theme of my talking tonight, councillor Teter and I were talking about like, like we, we don't have to do things in the way we've always done things, right? Can we talk to the county, right? They are in a gr- not a great situation. Are there, are there shared services, right? Is there a shared service model that, that, that we can start bending the cost curve down? Because instead of us buying our own software and doing our own thing and the county doing their own thing and the school board doing their own thing, like are there inter-agency agreements that we can look at? I don't know. Again, that's a conversation for today or tomorrow. That's probably not, but those are the kind of things that will help me kind of frame that revenue conversation because it feels like to me this is largely an expense conversation, an expense problem. And you know, we, we took a leap of faith last year. We took a lot of political heat too by raising the property tax to the maximum. I'm willing to go more, but we, we also have to figure out this other portion too. Because I can't keep doing everything and then it just keep getting wider and wider every year. That doesn't feel like success to me and I don't know the answer and, but, but it, it just feels like we need some more work there. Um, and then my last one is, I would love to see as we start framing the core kind of services for the city. Hillsborough is pretty much the same size we are. Gresham's pretty, like, like what are their core services that they're delivering on? You know, I know that, that Hillsborough is hiring like thirty or forty people in the past year and I know they're in a very different situation because of commercial uh land that we don't have and things like that. I'm contextual, but I, I, I would love to see like their view on the budget. Gresham, like peers around us, like what their, what their definition of core services is, is sort of a framework for us to look at too. Again, knowing that we're different, we have different people, different needs, but I think that would help me kind of frame this discussion in my mind. That's it. Thank you.
And councillor Hassan?
I would just say, I mean, I'm pretty much going to echo what I've heard. Um, like for me, it's like what are the revenue opportunities, which is already up there? Like, are there additional revenue opportunities or streams that we haven't visited? Like please let, you know, please bring as much of that to us, but then also what are those core services? And then what are the services that we're doing that are nice to have? And then us just really being willing to have the honest conversation to say like, what does that mean? So like your first question about can we get it to do this? I was like, yeah, second that. So whatever we can do to, to get you the information that you need so that we can get that information and, and have that like hard conversation, like I'm ready.
Okay, uh, mayor, and then councillor Kimmy.
We have to do this really hard work, um, but to maybe a little bit of your question, some of the things um, I flew back from Japan early for a couple of reasons, one of which was to meet with OR seven. So OR seven, it's the seven largest cities. Um, the city managers often meet in their consortium, but the mayors often meet in our consortium. Uh, one of, we're not like, it feels isolating. We are not the only ones in this situation. ODOT just released a no, no building budget. They're only going to be plowing the pass between here and Bend once a day. And I don't know how many of you guys drive back and forth, but like once a day, it's going to cut off an entire region of the state. And so um, there's a lot of energy around property tax reform that's not going to, um, well, energy from the cities because the state doesn't care because there's, they're giving back a billion dollars. Um, but we are, what you'll see is the drum of some of the stuff the councillor or the city manager is talking about. The Ben mayor just released a um, an op-ed last week talking about what you were talking about the ground. She brought all the builders in town together and said, okay, well, we gave you more land. Now what? We have no money for the stuff under the ground. And so now we're starting to talk about infrastructure, not just as buildings, but what we see under the ground too. And getting around the idea of cost recovery, like our city is not the only one. We're like, you know, builders have to start paying more in fees and we're doing all of that. So I think it's going to take a lot of our own shifting. The mayors and the city managers are, you know, we're talking about this. Um, what you'll see is we're going to start prepping the short session, the idea that we're going to be coming back for more things. But it's not going to really happen until twenty twenty five. If we could get some agreement around property tax reform being to be done. We, there is an agreement that we're paying enough taxes to do everything. Um, but it's not all coming to us, right? We're having a small, and just so you know, like what about our property tax rate fix rate is like four point nine five, Gresham's is two point two five, Tigers is two point oh. So we actually fare way better than the cities around us. And so Gresham, I mean, they're, they're way worse than we are. Hillsborough is doing a little bit better, but I'm telling like, uh, we, we are doing really well compared to the cities around us. So I don't know um how much value of like looking around because we're all in the same real shit situation to be blunt. And so like how much energy we look at what other cities are doing, we are going to have to get into the nitty gritty and have real hard conversations. And so we're not, we're not the only ones. It's not getting better. Um, but I do think we're going to have to look at fees and we're going to have to look at hard things and we're going to have to make a really, a lot of hard decisions together. But it's not in the five to ten dollar categories. It's like, you know, if we're going to build South Cooper Mountain, we've been talking to the governor, the governor's been meeting with us. So all of those things we're doing is really important, but I want to, I want to give you some hope that we're having these conversations, but I want to realize it for you that twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven is when those conversations are really going to come to fruition and we're in twenty I want to, I want to give you some hope that we're having these conversations, but I want to realize it for you that 25, 26, 27 is when those conversations are really going to come to fruition and we're in 2023. So there's some work coming, but we're going to have to really do some work in this budget because already starting at the deficit, the city manager is saying is it's a challenging position for us to be in.
Okay.
That wasn't hopeful to end on. Sorry.
Just a time check. So we have, uh, councillor Kimmy, uh, is going to speak and then we haven't heard from councillor Teter and I know councillor Tivnan wants to weigh in again. So, uh, we've got about to, oh, I'm sorry. And councillor Hassan wants, oh, we're good. Okay. All right. Uh, so about another 10 minutes so that we have five minutes to wrap up before you guys want to leave for tonight. Councillor Kimmy, go ahead.
All right. So, um, so far every budget meeting, I see this graph wide apart, right? It's always the bad news. And then we're talking about creating a revenue, find a way, right? Maybe Jenny's preparing something surprising for tomorrow. Give us the good news. But I'm, I'm very hopeful. Voila, right? But um, I, I, I'm, I'm listening to these conversations and I'm thinking about Apollo 13 movie where you're trying to Yeah.
Find the random people to do.
Right. We're trying to find that little bit of outage and energy to reboot the module coming back to earth, right? And I, I'm imagining that. So I would love to see when you go back and trying to figure it out that this graph going positive, at least neutral, find a way that might work. Find the revenue source. Identify the core services and how are we going to do this to get there? And maybe give us some more options. Then we are ready to go in and work and, you know, maybe risk getting reelection, but we're going to make this right for the community. But we are talking about let's do this, let's do that. But then, uh, we're, I don't think we're spending enough time to really figure it out and find a solution for it. So I love to see next time around, hopefully near future. These are the things we might consider doing this to make this right, right? Make this and going, hopefully going positive. Cause the way I see it is that inflation's keep going up, our revenues flattening out. So no matter what we do, we're going to keep widening up. I don't know. So even truly, we're going to, we're not going to have a budget. We're going to, we're not going to have a reserve account. We're barely surviving. So I want to correct that. At least we are in a transition period where we can make those changes as mayor was saying that we'll see something coming positive or some, some results in 2027 or 28, but I want to see that. So we can make some hard choices now. So maybe you can bring back the we're going to, you know, turn on the toaster or coffee maker, which one first, right? To make those choices. Yeah.
Okay, um, before councillor Tivnan speaks again, councillor Teter, did you have some questions or?
Uh, sure. Just a couple of comments. Um, Edward had the Apollo 13 analogy. I was thinking of, of the Portland Trailblazers. I'm really bad this year, but hopefully in 27, 28, we'll be in really good shape. Um, that said, I am very supportive of other uh, creative funding models or strategies that might be out there to help us raise some revenue that are not necessarily property taxes. Um, I know I've spoken with the city manager some on our, in our one-on-ones about some of these. And if tomorrow is the right time to talk through some of these in concept, be happy to do that, or if it's something we need to plan, a deeper work session, I'd be happy for that too. I just want to be able to start having some of these conversations. Um, I do like, uh, councillor Duggar's comments about thinking through creative options for working with some of our partner agencies and organizations to share costs or reduce costs, or maybe it relates to our facilities masters, master planning with partnerships with the school district or THPRD and just seeing where some of those uh, frustrations or challenges might align to make things a little bit easier if we can partner together. Um, and then I run it through the back of my head and this is a much longer term strategy or, or goal of mine that wouldn't be this year just because it's so huge. But thinking through annexation of some of the areas that are within the city, would those be uh, cost beneficial for the city to bring in areas that are in the county and offset some of the costs that the county carries for providing services to those areas? That's just a really much deeper conversation that we could be having in a few years or a couple of years. Um, but I'm just thinking of alternative funding or creative funding sources or the cost benefit, um, for bringing in new areas to the city or Cooper Mountain development.
Okay. Um, so we have about five minutes left, councillor Tivnan.
Thank you. I'll make this quick. Um, so to the point you just made about having the conversation on core services and making decisions, very hard decisions. I really appreciate what you said councillor Kimmy about not we can't think about our next election because some of the decisions that we have to make are, are going to hurt. And, um, it's probably the hardest decisions that we're going to make are the ones that are going to be the most beneficial for the city in the long term. Um, but I, I think back to some work with Oregon Cultural Trust. There was a historic, historic project done looking at these things called Granges throughout the state. That was a big thing for a while. And mayor's smile at me and shaking her head right now. It's too much truth over here. Yeah, well, it's like a communal gathering spot and it, they were created, especially in rural communities because they didn't have that. But it was also because the community wanted to take care of each other and they, they wanted a place to, to commune together and eat, break bread. Um, raise funds, help each other. And I, I think about the, the bake sales for my school when I was a little kid, PTA and the all hands on deck of community members helping too. And I know that there's partners within our community, there's a possibility jurisdictional transfer of certain core services or things that maybe they're better suited as some other agency overseeing, um, with funds coming from public dollars. Is there also room in this equation to, um, uh, let it go? And we're building a nonprofit incubator. We're trying to help raise up organizations within our community that can respond to needs that we cannot respond to or that we can't fully respond to. I think it's not a problem to solve. It's just something to build into the equation that we're talking about is I mean, this, this feels extremely critical to me. Like there's a point of no return. Talk about escape velocity, you know, stay on the, um, astrophysics theme is, uh, if we, if there is a possibility that if we don't get this right, future generations of people in Baywatch can suffer. And I, it's, like you said, it's not just us. There's cities that are, that are having this underwater imbalance that's happening because of forces that we cannot control. And so I just, I feel like the conversations we're going to have are going to be very painful. There's going to be tears. It's, it's going to be very hard to get through. Um, and I'll, I'll shut up in a second. I just want to say I really appreciate all of you and, um, I, I, I think that the hardest work, um, is usually the most important work. So okay, thank you. Thank you.
We're going to pick this conversation back up tomorrow. Um, and then I just want to do a quick check-in on our agenda. So what we have planned for tomorrow, we'll do, uh, we have you guys arriving around eight o'clock, uh, to start the meeting at 8:30. Uh, we'll do a quick warm-up. We'll, we'll do our review and check-in. Um, we'll complete the budget and financial outlook. Um, so there'll be some more presentation and then more discussion, talk about your next steps and your timeline. We have the council priority update, so you'll get a recap on the, um, progress of your priorities set last year. And, uh, and then during that section, we'll talk about opportunities for refinement and review. So if there's anything that you want to tweak from um, that list. And then we have updates from the organization. So you're going to hear from all the department heads and they're going to kind of tell their story. Um, to give updates on staff capacity, ongoing projects, just general wellbeing. We have a working lunch scheduled. Sorry, but you guys want to cram a lot of stuff in and we want to get you out early on your Saturday. So sorry to do that to you, but that's where we'll talk about the goal framework. Um, what's working, what's not working? How do you want to improve it? And then we'll get into any of the things that we flagged for, uh, refinement. We'll have some conversation around those refinement opportunities and then, um, wrap up and get you out of there after we've got agreement or consensus and or majority agreement on the refinements. So everybody okay with that? Do we need to make any adjustments?
Uh, just not to the, uh, agenda here, but just for my, tomorrow's going to be casual. So, you know, we don't need to
All right. Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for, uh, your engagement tonight for staff's presentations and all the coordination to make it happen. We'll see you tomorrow around 8:00 AM for an 8:30 start time. Oh, Dan, did you have?
Question of, uh, should we be leaving stuff here?
Oh, yes. Thank you for saying that. So yes, we will, uh, come back to the same format tomorrow. So you can leave anything that you're comfortable leaving in this room and at your spaces and, uh, we'll be ready to jump in in this format tomorrow. Thank you.